Okay, we should be all good to go. We're streaming and recording. So at 5:30, I'll turn it over to the chair to start.
All right, we're ready to go.
I think we have about two minutes.
All right.
And just a friendly reminder to anybody out there, if you're not speaking, if you could please mute your phones or your computers, whatever you're using to join us tonight, that would be greatly appreciated.
Bye, boys.
Hello, everybody, whoever is all there.
Hi, Marty.
Howdy.
It's 5:30 now that Marty's here. Let's get the show on the road.
And my audio is working for a quick minute, so.
Well, let's get going so we before we lose it. Okay, we'll start tonight's meeting. The March 11th, 2021, meeting of the Development Commission with the Pledge of Allegiance as usual. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America,
and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, first on our agenda tonight is the East Franklinton Plan Overview with Chris Prasutti.
Thank you very much, Sheriff Patrick. Some concerns were raised at the last hearing, and so we appreciate the opportunity to return this month to discuss the proposed East Franklinton Special Parking Area again and to ask for your support. I'll take a few moments to explain the involvement of our three departments in this public service initiative. As noted in our presentation last month, the Planning Division of the Department of Development is involved because they staffed the East Franklinton Review Board. Also, as the East Franklinton Neighborhood continues to experience rapid redevelopment, as evidenced by so much construction activity lately, the Planning Division staff and the Review Board see this initiative as an opportunity to create a historic preservation component that complements the reduced parking requirements they proposed. Planning staffers here this evening discuss that effort and also to address any questions about the planning objectives or the design review role and authority of the Review Board, which is otherwise unaffected by this proposal. Of course, my office is involved in this matter, and this matter is before you for recommendation to City Council because it requires changes to the zoning code. The code change would establish the special parking area for the East Franklinton Neighborhood in the parking chapter with reduced parking requirements. It would also modify the East Franklinton zoning district to establish the historic preservation component, as well as to remove the Review Board's administrative authority to grant parking variances, which is consistent with the Short North Special Parking Area has been in effect for about four years, in that it no longer permits parking variances to be considered by the BZA or by City Council. Thank you again for your consideration of its importance to the initiative. I'll now turn it over to Robert Farren, who is the Assistant Director of the Parking Services Division in the Department of Public Service. Robert will explain more about this initiative and how it fits within the city's strategic parking plan. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, and thanks, Chris, for the introduction. My name is Robert Farren. As Chris mentioned, I'm the Assistant Director for Parking Services with the Department of Public Service. I appreciate the time this evening. We're not going to go over the entirety of the presentation from last month, but we want to focus on a couple key elements of the special parking area. Can everyone see the presentation? Okay, thank you. Got some head nods. So we're going to go over briefly how this fits into our strategic parking plan that was completed in 2019, then talk more specifically about the special parking area, the comprehensive outreach effort that our staff has conducted with the various stakeholder groups in East Franklinton and Franklinton, and get a little more into the parking requirement and its consistency with other East Franklinton planning efforts to date. First, to level set, we have a couple goals of this special parking area. Number one, from a parking standpoint, provide predictability in right sizing the parking code to make sure that we are requiring enough parking but not being arduous in the parking requirements. And we'll go into more detail about that in a minute. That is to support ongoing development, but really just to set clear expectations for the development community and the community at large as to what parking requirements are needed for the East Franklinton Special Parking Area and to make sure there's adequate parking. You don't want to overbuild parking. We know parking can be an impediment to affordability, to historic preservation, and we know we want to create a mixed-use walkable neighborhood in East Franklinton. This plan also supports, the special parking area also supports existing planning efforts around historic preservation, maintaining the unique character of East Franklinton, and again, promoting that mixed-use walkable environment. The other thing that the special parking area does through an in-lu fee process is it creates restricted funds that can be used for parking and mobility initiatives in East Franklinton only. And we see a benefit to that where we do see there are some unique challenges in this area that with the support of East Franklinton Special Parking Funds can help solve as this area continues to develop. A little bit about how this fits into the special parking area, or sorry, into the broader strategic parking plan. In 2019, Tim Lee Horn and Associates conducted a strategic parking plan that focused on our high-demand parking areas of the city, including University District, downtown, German Village, Burry District, and East Franklinton and Franklinton as a whole. And in particular, in Franklinton, we're trying to be more proactive in our parking management strategies, both on-street and off-street. With regard to off-street, I mentioned it before, right sizing the parking code, making sure that we have a modern parking code to support the development that we want to see in East Franklinton. And again, employing a fee-in-lu process that can help fund improvements such as streetscape improvements, mobility and wayfinding, off-street parking and shared parking. For example, in the short north, we've used some of those funds to date to fund shared parking arrangements and parking retail validation programs to encourage the use of off-street parking facilities and to make sure that parking is adequately available for residents in the neighborhood while utilizing off-street parking that has been partially funded by the public as well as the private sector. And again, this is part of a broader management strategy that includes both off-street and on-street parking assets. Before I pass it off to Jackie to talk about the code, I want to talk briefly about the outreach. Aside from the outreach of the strategic parking plan, in which we had several virtual engagements, as well as in person, this was pre-COVID in East Franklinton regarding the SPP, we've had a series of meetings regarding the special parking area recommendation with the East Franklinton Review Board that supported this recommendation, the Franklinton Area Commission. We presented to both the Planning and Housing Committee, as well as the full commission. Both groups supported, supported this effort. The Franklinton Board of Trade, and then key stakeholders, including developers, local business interests, as well as property owners, and all received notifications. And we asked those stakeholders to solicit feedback to our team. And in general, we have received great support for this with the understanding that this parking management strategy, an additional tool in our toolbox, can be used to facilitate and support the efforts that are already underway in East Franklinton. With that, I'm going to pass it off to Jackie Omen with our planning team to go a little more detail on the parking requirements. Jackie?
Thank you, Robert. So hopefully you can all hear me okay. Basically, as Chris mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, really the special parking area is providing parking reductions. So across the board, we're going to be seeing a reduced requirement for parking in East Franklinton, which we think is very appropriate based on the urban environment and the existing conditions. So I just want to make note of that. When you're looking at the specifics, in general, you're looking at about a 50% reduction from what would be required today in the area. And then additionally, we have some uses, specifically, as we mentioned last time, focused on artist space, so art galleries, artist manufacturing, and artist workspace, which are able to be zero parked just right off the bat. And that supports the goals of the East Franklinton Creative Community District Plan, which we're going to look at a little bit on the next slide, in its idea of really building off of the community that the artists, the plan was passed in 2012, adopted in 2012, I should say. And even at that time, there were already artists in the neighborhood really making East Franklinton into what it is, and they're still there today. And so that's a major part of just the new development and new things that have come into the neighborhood in the last 10 years. And so we really want to make sure that we're still allowing and providing for that to be an easy thing for artists to be able to get in and do that. And I do want to mention that artist manufacturing is probably more broad than what people think. We're not just talking about folks who paint or do fine art, but there's a lot of things that can fall under artist and artist manufacturing, artist workspace, related to the art field, and there's a lot that goes on with that. Additionally, small retail spaces and single-unit dwellings are going to be required zero parking. So the idea again, and we've said this before, but I just want to mention it again, is that we're trying to find this balance, and we think that we're at a really good place with this proposal where we are reducing parking requirements, but we're still providing what we think is appropriate parking for the neighborhood in the long run. So while there might not be, there's some areas in the neighborhood right now that feel a pinch on parking, and there are others that don't. But we know that in the next five to 10 years, the entire neighborhood is likely going to be feeling the impacts of issues, if not enough parking is provided. So we're trying to have that balance of what's appropriate for an urban neighborhood, and this is what we feel like is a really good fit for trying to hit that balance. Additionally, as we mentioned last time, so we want to make sure that existing buildings and historic buildings that really add to the character of the neighborhood, we don't want them to be at risk for demolition because of parking requirements, because we know a lot of those buildings don't have onsite parking available. And so we've allowed an additional reduction for reuse of those buildings, 50% less than what the already reduced parking requirements are. And then if a property is listed on the Columbus Register of Historic Properties, it would actually be eligible for zero parking. So again, this is just us trying to balance the needs of parking while also maintaining the urban character and historic character of the neighborhood. If you want to go to the next slide, Robert, and I'll just say, Robert or Chris, if there's anything else you wanted to add on that slide.
I'll just add really quickly, Jackie, that the in-lu space fee, just for clarification, while the zoning code change provides the authority to set in-lu fee, that fee is actually set in the Department of Public Service Rule and Regulation. We do that because it's a market-based, it's a market-based figure. Meaning, that figure can be reviewed. In the short north, it was originally set at one price, and then at the recommendation or at the request of business interests in the short north, it was reviewed and actually raised. So that fee is set at $15,000, but can be reviewed from time to time to make sure that we're not inhibiting development, but we're also not encouraging developers to write a big check and then create an on-street parking challenge.
Robert, Maria actually posted a question to what you were just talking about in the chat. So I'll keep going, but I wanted to point that out to you so you can address that when I turn it back to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So again, so we have two plans that the special parking area is really leaning into. So we have the special, I'm sorry, not the special, the strategic parking plan that specifically was looking at parking needs in some of the core areas of the city. But we also have the East Franklinton Creative Community District Plan, which was adopted in 2012. And we do believe that the special parking area is lending itself to support the ideas of the plan. So just a few notes here, that we've already talked about the vision of the plan for a walkable mixed-use environment and the special parking area reducing those baseline parking requirements. We also have a vision in the plan for well-connected neighborhood that's served by improved mobility options, right? So not just parking, but transit, sidewalks, bikeways. And one of the benefits of the special parking area is that the funds that are produced by the special parking area, if there are any, would be able to be used to support that improved connectivity. So those funds don't need to be used for parking per se. They could be, but they also could be used for lots of other improvements to the neighborhood that could benefit East Franklinton and surrounding communities as well. And then it would have, and I just want to clarify when I say that, it would have to be used within East Franklinton, but I think that that connectivity is where I'm saying that that connectivity could also benefit other neighborhoods. And then we also have a vision for the unique character of East Franklinton to be preserved. That's talked about a lot in the plan. And that is one of the reasons why we focused a lot of thought and energy into thinking about how we can really encourage the reuse of the existing buildings in the neighborhood and not put them at risk of demolition simply for parking needs. And then finally, the plan also recommends sustainable practices. And we're encouraging that. There's a lot, of course, sustainability encompasses a lot of things. So we're not doing all the things that we need for sustainable practices, but we do play a part in it by allowing reuse and preservation of existing buildings and also encouraging less parking, so less space dedicated to parking. So I think that's it. Really, overall, we feel like the benefits of the special parking area is providing this consistent, predictable parking standards and process that is reduced from what's currently required, but also finding a way to capture the value of parking when development really does want to allow, basically, that's the idea of in-lu fees, is that they're still contributing to a solution, even if it's not being provided on their site. And then we're eliminating the parking variance process, so eliminating just that inconsistency of that process. So I'm going to turn it back over to Robert, and we'll answer questions at the end.
Thank you, Jackie. Just real quick, there was a chat, if I can just answer that. Maria had asked about, would there be regular monitoring to assess effective pricing, both on-street as well as the in-lu fee? My response for on-street, and complimentary but separate from this proposal, is to implement demand-based pricing and manage parking in East Franklinton. And when we do that, we will employ demand-based pricing, where we look at occupancies twice a year to maintain at least 80% occupancy on the street. We initially did it quarterly, and best management practice is actually to do it twice a year. We will be doing that. And then on the in-lu fee, we will be reviewing that as developments come in. But as I said, in the short north, it was a request from the market to take a look. So we really want to see our stakeholders provide us feedback as to whether that fee is an impediment or if it's not doing the job it's supposed to do in terms of providing adequate parking developments.
Robert, let me ask you. Typically, structured parking should cost between $22 and $25 per, $1,000 per space. On-site parking may be $5,000. If you're offering in-lu parking below the cost of building your own structured space, isn't that creating a bit of a magnet to just people write a check and lightly leave the parking to you instead of taking care of their own parking?
Great question, and yes, anywhere from $18,000 to $30,000, somewhere in between there in terms of structured parking these days. We are erring on the side of incentivizing right sizing parking. That fee again can be adjusted. We do have caps. What we didn't put in the slide deck here is a developer cannot come in and opt out of all their parking. There is a cap at which they have to, even if they can write the check, they still have to supply a certain amount of parking. I would have to defer to Amanda on my staff, Amanda Ford, to give you that exact number. But we put that in as a floor so that we don't have a situation where if a developer requires 100 spaces, they can just pay 100 times $15,000.
Right, that's good.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
I do. Are we open for comments here? I was the one that kind of raised a question for you to sort of go back and look at things and see if there were any more creative solutions available. Franklinton is planned to be the live-work district for the young, creative Columbocites. And I just asked that you kind of investigate what other creative solutions there might be to address stuff in the future rather than just sort of the big developer issues. I know that I used an analogy last time that, you know, we don't, the plan for Franklinton wasn't to have a Disney World that was built by big developers, and then our young, creative people move in. It's kind of like, why don't we have organic development there? It seems to me that, you know, that there's a chance to do something here that's bigger than just employing the short north policy on Franklinton. And I really think that there's more to address parking-wise as Franklinton as a whole. You know, what I heard from you was just more elucidation of the plan that you presented last time. I read it pretty carefully. You know, I sense a dichotomy in what you're proposing when I compare it to the plans. You know, there should be a granular development of Franklinton if you want to attract the kind of people you're talking about attracting. And that's opposed to institutional development. And whatever policies are set up dictate development. So it seems to me that we don't really know what's going to happen there, but it certainly is not the short north. It seems that the people you contend you want to attract should be the type you would also want to involve in your solutions, but we haven't reached that critical mass yet. And really, you've kind of pulled away the local decision-making, although you do have the East Franklinton Board being able to comment on this stuff. But I think you've overlooked the granular part, the onesie-twosies. And I can give you some specific examples. When a parking lot is restriped, and it certainly was good for handicap parking in the past, but it doesn't have a van-accessible space, as soon as you add a van-accessible space, you lose a parking space. It used to be there was an exception in the old zoning code that allowed some latitude for that situation to happen. Now, there's not. Somebody comes up short. It seems to me that there are several levels of parking issues that need to be addressed. One is sort of the drop-off and pick-up stuff at businesses. The second thing that you've addressed that I don't agree with is that you've prohibited shared parking and off-hours parking, and I believe that's a very creative solution to parking problems. You know, I understand that you're saying single-family homes won't have a parking requirement, but it seems that the development of off-street parking might be an important thing to look at, how you would, both by the zoning code and contribution, work out so that houses that don't have garages in Franklinton are able to have expanded parking off the alleys. Also, there's the idea that you go down some of the streets in Franklinton, which I've sort of done, and up through the hilltop as well. Boy, if you took out some inoperable vehicles, you'd end up with more off-street parking, you'd have more on-street parking. Also, what's going on with electric vehicles? How are you addressing that? I heard nothing. And then also, given that this area is meant to be walkable and bikeable and connected, you're perpetuating the 750-foot rule for alternate parking spaces. 750 feet is about a two-minute walk. It seems to me that something could be done there that would be a little more creative. I'm not, you know, you guys are going to do, you guys are going to take this to council. I'm absolutely sure of it. I just feel that you have an opportunity here that you're institutionalizing some things that are still yet not firmed up. You know, we don't know what the economy is going to do post-COVID, but I can tell you still that my feel of this is that it should never be the short north again. And they have completely different history, of course. You know, the deinstitutionalization that happened in the late '70s, early '80s, that was a very interesting time in the short north. I used to ride the bus to campus from German Village, and it was elucidating. The amount of deinstitutionalized people riding up and down High Street in buses was, I felt like maybe I was back in high school. All I can say is, for the cost of four parking spaces in the in-lu plan, you could hire a planner to work a year. And I think the issues are a lot bigger than what you presented. It was a very good presentation, very cogent. I think that you still should allow onesie-twosie decisions to be made locally by the residents, and I think you should engage them in some way, and I think you need a policy to do that. That's my piece. Thank you.
There's a lot to unpack there, John, and I don't know how much time we want. I've been feverishly writing notes. Sheriff, if it's okay, I'd like to respond to a couple of those, just provide some clarification.
About five minutes to roll into.
I would accept a call at some time to discuss some of this stuff. I would I would accept a call at some time to discuss some of this stuff.
I would nominate John Ingerson to be an adjunct consultant to your committee to I'm going to point out, he raises very good points, very, very realistic points. You don't want to lose the character of what makes it special by overpainting this.
I'll just make a couple of points, and then, John, I so I agree, but I would love to travel to virtual coffee with you, John, because we're both thinking the same thing. We're we're using the same tool as what we used in Short North, but I can tell you that's where the similarities end. In terms of the zoning code provisions for parking, you were very intentional as to what parking requirements made sense to support the character of East Franklinton. So you'll see there are exemptions for the parking for parking requirements that are different in Frank East Franklinton and Short North. Because we recognize that parking is a local issue, a local challenge, as well as overall development patterns. So I did just wanted to mention that because I know we compare them because they're the same tool. But that's but that's essential. That's essentially what the similarities stop. I'll also mention that I agree with you on the EV spaces. Again, that on-street, I love to chat with you more about that. Regarding the off-street, we are we do have a process in the rule and regulation that allows for appeal. And when a developer feels like there should be a reduction in the fee or a waiver of the fee, we then bring back the stakeholder group, the East Franklinton Review Board, internal staff, the Franklinton Area Commission, and we talk through those things. So what we don't want to do is create another level of bureaucracy that essentially yields the same result, a parking variance. But there is a process to look at those more quote-unquote innovative projects that support the overall plan and development for East Franklinton in this in this in this in this in this overall rule and regulation. And then the other things that you had mentioned are they're more on the on-street side, and again, I'd love to address those kind of outside of this. But I I actually believe we're saying the same thing, and I'm very supportive of what you're saying, John. And I'm a firm believer that this plan in the zoning code as it's written will support the things the things that you're looking for and that others are looking for to make sure that East Franklinton continues to develop as a creative arts district.
Thank you.
All right, I think we should call a voice vote to approve.
Chair.
Where you are. Yes.
Before we move on, Bill Fergus from the East Franklinton Review Board did want to speak in favor of this policy item.
Okay. Bill?
All right, good afternoon, everybody. Jackie, a question for you before I start. Does everybody have a copy of the letter that I wrote dated December eleven, twenty twenty?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, I believe they do. Yes.
Okay, good. So I don't have to go over that again. So you know, that that the reasoning in that letter stands. I just wanted to add today that an additional reason why the board supports the creation of a special parking area. The existing code as written and applied forces the board to make judgment calls for many, many parking reduction requests. And I would say that the vast majority of matters that come before us involve parking reduction requests. We make these judgment calls. We feel that we do a good job of making the judgment calls, but for any particular call we make, they establish precedents, and future applicants can can attack any decisions we make based on presidential grounds. It's our feeling that the proposed parking standards take the judgment calls out of the board's hands and create uniform standards that at the same time provide the flexibility that's needed to to maintain the the character of the neighborhood. And that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions for me?
No, I think there's enough flexibility built into this thing that you can mold it as it goes forward. And I like the idea of consistency, so everybody's not standing in line six feet apart waiting to get in the door to have a variance heard, so. I would entertain a motion to approve what you've done so far and encourage you to keep working on it. Get John Ingerson's email and make sure listen to some good ideas and encourage you to take take heed of that and work them into your game plan. If you want to vote to take forward a city council, I think now's the time we cast that vote. So I will take a motion to approve what you've done so far. Anybody?
Mr. Chair, it's not that I'm not adverse to, you know, being one member that would pose the motion, but I I still have some questions about the special review process. These are things that are not nearly as substantive as John's appropriate questions are. I'd like to know the rationale for the appeal process being filed with the Director of Public Service, and I I am embarrassed to say I don't know who that person is, so that's a bit of an embarrassment for me. But the appeal process and the special review process caused me just enough concern that I would have a few more questions. I can filter those through John or directly to the, you know, the the team here. But I just feel that I would probably abstain if we were voting this evening only because I don't feel well enough informed. So I just wanted you to know that.
I totally understand that. When I decades ago, when the Southeast Area Plan came forward, it had been on the board for ten years. And it always stopped because not every problem could be identified and every problem could be
Sure.
resolved. So it finally got approved with the concept that they had recurring moments where they could tweak the plan and modify it according to feedback in unique situations. So in the perfect world, we have every detail covered, every I dotted, every T crossed, and it would be complete. I don't know if this is going to go forward. I think it has to get legs, and I think the request before us is if this is reasonably positive to help Franklinton grow in a in an attractive way to investors, but keep the character of the area. It's got to start somewhere. So I would propose that we give it a vote and let the work continue rather than than have it go around the track again. That's my own personal opinion. How many commission members are here in the meeting? I see five. Amanda's not here.
Yeah, she's here. All six of you are there.
Okay, great.
Um, Mike, I just, you know, look. It should go forward, but I don't believe the timetable that you guys are presenting takes this to council in May and gets it locked in. And you know, until you make some exceptions for the low-level you know, the onesie-twosie exceptions and make some flexibility there, I I'm not for this. I think you're I I think this is tilted at larger developers, and that's all well and good, but I think you've got to include the community. I've talked to several Franklinton commissioners about this in the last month, and you know, they they like the idea that they don't have to be the judges of what gets a variance and what doesn't. But I think that they should still not give up everything for that comfort. I think there should be some onesie-twosies that that are discernible and and awardable on a local level for for something that really fits. And I will also tell you that you know, the legal process to satisfy you know, parking that is is secured somewhere else is something that has to have a survey, has to have a deed restriction written, and has to be recorded at the county recorder in order to pass muster. And that's my experience from the Short North, and it's onerous. And I I think there needs to be some wiggle room. I don't think there needs to be as much wiggle room in in the Short North as there does in in Franklinton, but I think Franklinton definitely deserves something there.
Okay, so we have two. Kay, what's your feelings on this?
I'm leaning more towards John's John's opinion. So my question there is, not knowing exactly what timetable we are. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Not knowing exactly what timetable Chris presented at his department has, what is the difficulty, given another one month, allow Robert and John to actually have a conversation and try and integrate what John is suggesting into the plan?
All right, Maurice, well, before we ask Robert a question, do you have any comments, Maria?
Now, I was not here last month, so I didn't get the benefit of a lot of the conversations that may have taken place then. I did go through it as somebody who's in Victorian Village. I know from a residential standpoint, I do believe that our parking process has been successful. I don't know in terms of folks coming in. That's another issue entirely. But I would probably be more on the abstaining abstaining this evening just because the issues that John has raised and that Marty has raised, I have not really looked into with any any depth, and I'd want to feel more comfortable.
All right, let's let's poll Amanda as well.
I mean, I totally appreciate all the hard work that's gone into it. I wish this was happening citywide, that the parking requirements were being reduced citywide so that developers weren't required to put as much parking in in their developments as they sorry, as they currently are. However, I know that that is not something that this is looking at. I also live in the world where I present work constantly and consistently, and it's all policy-based, and people are always like, well, what if, what if, what if? And we become paralyzed by analysis because we can't anticipate every single thing that comes up. So I am sympathetic to that, and I also on a personal note, really appreciate the thought that has gone into thinking about the historic buildings that are going to be rehabbed, hopefully saved and rehabbed and reused. And also the use of the buildings for what I hope will be a significant amount of cultural use rather than, you know, private commercial development. So and and, you know, retail. So I I would make a motion to put this forward to council, just with the understanding that I I know that nothing is perfect, and I appreciate all of the thoughts that have kind of gone into it and coming back and giving us more detail. But I also support, you know, John's concerns as well as Marty's and Kay's and and Maria's as well. But I also know that you all probably want to get this forward so that the developments that are coming online have the opportunity to be part of this policy. So I would support a motion to move this forward.
All right, Chris, Robert, what what's our hardships you face that this is delayed a month to you study a little bit deeper, dig a little bit deeper into the weeds?
I'll I'll take this one, Chris. First of all, Amanda, I I certainly appreciate the comments and kind of the one of the comments about analysis paralysis. I didn't say it that way, but that's that's how I heard it. Philosophically, I think we're on the same page, and that's where I'm struggling a little bit. Because I I actually, everything I'm hearing, I feel like we have provisions in the rule and regulation to allow for the, as quoted, onesie-twosie. And though it had that wiggle room while providing consistency, so is there a hardship? We've, you know, we've been working on this since Q three, Q four of last year. It's one that has been on our roadmap for a while, and one that we feel like timing is is well is well put for this because we feel like we are syncing up with the with the next round of development in in East Franklinton. And I would say the one thing that we heard from, and I think compared to Short North, and I was not on the ground yet, I was still I was still at a mile high in Colorado, but one of the one of the pieces of feedback and criticisms of the city on the Short North was that it was too late. And we really do feel like at this juncture with Franklinton, with how development's occurring, we can try and get a little ahead of this and make sure that we're still protecting and preserving the historical character of the neighborhood. So a hardship, I think it just it it's less impactful. And again, I I don't believe we have a philosophical difference on on how on the on the policy. I do think we obviously have a difference on the mechanics of the of the of the
We have a lengthy agenda in front of us. I'm going to make the motion that just go forward for a vote. I'd like Amanda to second that motion. You may be getting a two to two to two vote, but at least you got a vote, and there are some serious questions that need to be answered, and sooner or later, you're going to have to confront those those issues and make decisions and then find the words that that make it all work fluently. But if you don't get started, you're going to be still going around in circles. So I'm going to make the motion that just go forward. Amanda, would you second that emotion?
Yes, I'll second that motion, and I also like to say historic preservation has continually come up in these meetings and has become increasingly more important to our residents and staff and also our development commissioners. So while planning is on here, might we also suggest that that's something that is thought about holistically throughout the entire city and not just in the neighborhoods that are seeing significant development? I think it's time to really start thinking about that in a realistic way. So yes, I second the motion.
All right, so Shannon, will you give her a voice or a roll call vote?
Kelsey's going to do the honors.
Marty Anderson?
I'm going to abstain for reasons I mentioned previously with no disrespect to the hard work that's obviously been done.
Maria Conroy?
I'm also going to abstain.
Amanda Golden?
Yes.
Don Ingerson?
You're muted, Don. Still muted.
I'm gonna I'm gonna vote no. It needs more work.
Okay, I'm away.
No.
And Sheriff Fitzpatrick?
I'm going to vote yes, just to make it a nice, beautiful tie, two to two to two, and the work needs to be done, but the sooner this comes into reality, the better it will be for Franklinton. So that's the way this is resolved. We will now go to the zoning case agenda, starting with case number one, Z nineteen day zero ninety-five, seventeen fifty Maryland Avenue.
Chair, would you like to take care of the two tablings before we begin?
Okay. Okay, uh, let's get those off the board. Cases number ten and eleven have requested tabling in writing, and they will pay another fee, another fee. Need a motion to table.
Excuse me, number one.
Sorry, cases twelve and thirteen.
Okay, twelve and thirteen.
I heard Dave Perry speak up. No, I so move, uh, Mr. Chair.
Okay, okay, uh, please, uh, second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of tabling cases twelve and thirteen.
Aye.
Okay, cases twelve and thirteen are tabled. Now, case number one, Z nineteen day zero ninety-five, seventeen fifty Maryland Avenue.
The site is undeveloped and zoned in the M Manufacturing District. The applicant proposes the L A R L D Limited Apartment Residential District in order to construct a multi-unit residential development with a maximum of seventy-four dwelling units. The site is subject to ordinance one seventeen dash twenty twenty, which is approved to permit permit the development of a multi-unit residential development in order to secure funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. C nineteen zero ninety-five was filed as a follow-up rezoning to this council variance. The ordinance seat for C V nineteen one one eight was conditioned on no certificate of zoning clearance being granted until Z nineteen zero ninety-five is completed. To the north of the site is Interstate six seventy. To the south are single unit dwellings in the R three residential district. To the east are two single unit dwellings in the M Manufacturing District. To the west is undeveloped land in the M Manufacturing District and single unit dwellings in the R three residential district. C V twenty dash one one five has been filed to vary perimeter yard landscaping and screening, block coverage, insider rear yard obstruction. That request we heard by city council and will not be considered at this development commission meeting. The site is within the boundaries of the Near East Area Plan, which recommends office, light industrial and mixed uses be developed in the northern portion of the site and in transition to housing on the southern portion of the site. Additionally, the plan recommends that new housing be compatible with the neighborhood through massing, orientation, and architectural style, and to maintain the existing street alley grid to ensure connectivity throughout the neighborhood. The site is located within the boundaries of the Near East Area Commission, whose recommendation is for approval. And the limitation text commits to a site plan and includes development standards addressing setbacks, site access, landscaping, building design and graphics provisions. The requested L A R L D Limited Apartment Residential District will allow a multi-unit residential development. The Planning Division does not oppose the residential uses on the site. While the Near East Area Plan recommends office, light industrial for portions of the site, residential may uses may be supported with appropriate site design that is consistent with the overall plan recommendations. The plan recommends that new housing be compatible with neighborhoods through massing, orientation, and architectural style, and the existing street and alley grid be maintained to ensure connectivity throughout the neighborhood. As such, the Planning Division requests the following revisions to the site plan. Connections to and continuation of the existing three grid. Further address Maryland Avenue through building orientation and entrances and porches. High quality elevations and building materials and appropriate height setbacks from Maryland Avenue. Once the site design issues are resolved with the Planning Division, staff's recommendation will be updated to approval. In the meantime, city department's recommendation is for disapproval. Thank you, and we have to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, Dan, traffic issues here?
No traffic issues.
And is Kathy with us for recreation and parks?
Yes.
I saw that she was here.
Yeah, I see her on the screen. Kathy?
Thanks, I was double muted. Uh, we have no comments.
Okay, uh, this is a very awkward. I can't even call it geometric. It's just a very strange infill piece of property of. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here to oppose this tonight? Okay, David, are you ready to make?
Yes, yes, sir. Uh, David Hodge, attorney for the applicant. You're right, this is a very uniquely shaped property. I think it looks like a duck facing east or west, rather. We worked pretty hard with the Near East Area Commission. Uh, also, uh, went out and meet with, met with the Civic Association that's uh, has oversight a little to the east of here down towards Nelson. Area Commission recommendation unanimous approval. Uh, as you heard from staff, uh, they have a preference that we uh do some things with the site plan that we connect to the street system. I think they have a a preference for that that there be a a maintenance of the existing street and alley grid uh, to ensure connectivity throughout the neighborhood. You know, looking in Bexley like I do, having grown up in a in a kind of a gridded street system neighborhood, I'm also a proponent of that. But uh, if this were in the middle of the neighborhood, I think that a comment like that would would be a lot more applicable than than where this property is uh and having this unique shape. This is up at the northern end of kind of the Near East uh Commission jurisdiction. It's south of uh six seventy and Leonard Avenue, the ramp onto six seventy. It's uh just west of some railroad tracks. It's kind of up in a corner. And so, uh, you know, we think we've we've developed a good site plan, uh, about the best site plan we can develop. We think we have uh great architecture. Uh, this is a, as you probably noted from the the staff report, this is a mixed income uh development. Truly mixed thirty, sixty, eighty, and a hundred of AMI. Uh, so we're grateful to be here tonight. Uh, we like the site plan as it is. Uh, we are certainly willing to continue to engage with planning. Uh, the neighborhood sees it a little bit differently with their unanimous approval, and we would respectfully request your approval uh on to council. Uh, Jeff Bauer with Connect Real Estate, uh, in this case, Central Ohio Opportunity Fund LLC is also here with me, uh, if anybody on the uh commission has questions.
Any, any questions from the group?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Marty.
And I can direct this, um, you know, David, to you or or but, um, why would you not, why would your client not be willing to consider what looked to me? It's not my field of expertise, so you know that, and I always acknowledge that. But why wouldn't your client consider the thoughtful recommendations of the Planning Division?
We, we just don't frankly quite understand what it is that they would like for us to do. We expressed uh a willingness to planning to connect to the alley to the west uh, to provide a connection that would that would take this to the east. But this great grid street system up here, we we don't think it's as important as it would otherwise be down in kind of the heart of the neighborhood where 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 there is an existing grid. Um, we think our architecture is nice. Uh, we have kind of a couple of different building types here, if if you'd like to look at at those again. But uh, you know, we we've worked hard with the neighborhood and have their unanimous approval. And and we think that the plan we've developed makes sense, the architecture we've developed makes sense.
David, let me interject there. Commissioner Anderson, uh, this is Jeff Bauer. I mean, two things. One, and Kelsey, I know that we made a late tweak to the site plan to to answer planning, but we did, excuse me, adjust our potential connection to the west to to align a driveway to be able to futurely connect to an alley there. We also have connection to the east again, two properties that we don't control, um, but would certainly be there for the future. So, um, I'll also add to David's comments, just the topography there. And again, there was a couple of the pictures that Kelsey showed. Um, it's a significant grade change from the the top to the bottom. Um, and so, you know, I think that we kept the smaller uh eight unit building right on Maryland Avenue, which is only two stories, and then put the three story buildings kind of in the back. So I guess I did want to just make sure there was a slight change to the site plan um, that does allow, if we ever were to be able to connect to the property to the west, we could do that. But we don't control the property to the west.
And I'd say that those properties to the west aren't controlled for a lack of trying. There, there's been an effort to 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 reach out to those owners to to bring that property into the fold here. But for various reasons, that appears extraordinarily unlikely to ever happen.
Uh, Mr. Chair and David and Mr. Bauer. Uh, when I heard you say what you said, David, what I translated that to was this isn't in the heart of Bexley. Um, this is out on the fringes. This is gonna be uh uh more affordable for a slightly, if not more than slightly lower socioeconomic clientele or renter. And they really don't deserve quite this much attention.
Ms. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, you you grossly misunderstood what I had to say. My comment was about the, my my comment, you grossly misunderstood what I had to say. I want to make that abundantly clear here, abundantly.
Correct.
My comment was about the about planning's comment about the grid street system. We didn't think extending the grid, the grid street system through this property made sense. It had nothing to do with socioeconomic status or anything else.
Okay, well, the other Planning Division requests seem to be more than just the continuation of the existing street grid. So there's uh comments about entrances, porches, high quality elevation, building materials. I I again, this isn't my field of expertise, and I'm very happy to acknowledge that over and over again. But I do have to rely on planning to educate me, if not the other commission members, on some of the other design issues that cause them concern. So that I I'm just throwing it back to the plan. Perhaps I'm throwing this back to the planning folks to see if they firm on those.
And I'll, and I'll throw it back to the neighborhood folks that unanimously recommended approval of the project based upon the site plan we showed them and the architecture we showed them. And that is being committed to as a part of this process.
Is anyone on on the call?
Unfortunately, not.
Okay, well, I'm sorry about that, because I, that would be a perfect way to get some input.
Well, if this property is ever gonna be developed, the grid is going to have to take a a reduced role, given the the uh shape of the pointed and curved boundaries of this property.
And the topography.
And the eastern, the eastern property relates to a separate road. And I don't know what else you would do. If if you were going to do a project here, you you really couldn't carry out the grid and have a critical mass. So, uh, Marie, what do you see when you look at this?
Um, I had initially, I kind of the knee jerk uh reaction that Marty did of, hey, why not? That why, why wouldn't you try this? Um, I am, I frankly, I think the the support of the community and the the diversity of of price points is is very, very appealing. Um, and I, you know, this is definitely, um, I I think the uh, I I'm not sure I completely understand, um, staffs. Uh, it usually from what was written to when we get to the meeting, these are things that this is typically resolved by the time we get to the meeting. So that's where I'm, I'm, you know, I I would, um, I'm uncomfortable with it, uh, because it is, again, it usually, it didn't seem a horrendous ask. Um, but on the, you know, I don't know if this is a a financing, trying to make numbers issue um, or 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 what, um, you know, where there's potential give and take on this. But I don't know, uh, again, like Marty said, it would be nice to to hear someone from the community.
But Commissioner, I mean, I guess I'll just weigh in that there has been communication with planning, um, you know, as recently as late Tuesday afternoon, when they basically said that there was, they didn't feel that there was time to to have another discussion before this meeting. So, um, it's certainly, you know, we've made a couple tweaks. This project, as I think Kelsey referenced, you know, was at council variance last year. Um, so this project's been on planning staff, you know, radar for, well, you know, certainly a long period of time, we've been working with the Near East Area Commission. So it's certainly not for a lack of effort on our part. I think that, um, we got to the point where, again, we're trying to bring seventy-four affordable housing units to a a piece of excess railroad ground that has been there, you know, vacant for a long period of time. And unfortunately, with the topography and some of the other, you know, issues that we're dealing with that piece of ground to to Commissioner Fitzpatrick, Chairman Fitzpatrick's point, this is pretty much what we can get. And so, um, we we made a couple adjustments to our site plan that would allow connectivity to both the east and the west in the future, if that, you know, made sense. Um, but, you know, we're ready to bring seventy-four affordable housing units to the Near East area. So I think that it certainly wasn't a lack of effort on our part. Um, unfortunately, you know, and again, I'm not blaming them, but with the pandemic, we're not able to sit down together. We're not able to go sit, you know, go look at the site. And, you know, if you looked at the pictures of the site, we're, there's there's topography changes that are, you know, pretty significant. Um, you know, we worked with uh Bararty Partners, as you'll see on the drawings, who's a well-respected local architect that's done many um units. And, you know, this is the plan that we came up with. It it's not because, you know, a lack of trying.
I I think the connection to woodland, your main entry drive is opposite of woodland, which otherwise dead ends into the property, the narrow point of the property. I think that makes work as as a, as a unit. You have, as mentioned, you you have the potential to connect through to the west if that opportunity ever led anywhere, and you already show a parking lot behind building E between building E and D that could easily continue on eastward to something in the future on that end cap piece.
Kelsey, can you bring up the site plan real quick again? I I I apologize. I just want to make sure that everyone understands the quick change that we made. If you look just to the below building B, there's a little driveway stub that has a dumpster currently located there. We've adjusted, we've adjusted that driveway to to match up to the alley that's behind those four lots there to the uh west. So that, again, in the future, that alley or that driveway on our piece could certainly match up exactly to where that alley is existing. So that that was the, um, that was a tweak that we had made based upon planning's recommendation. So, um, we can certainly, um, you know, put that into the package or certainly make sure that that's a condition that that alley or that driveway could matter, meet up, meet up to that alley. But that's the way it's now drawn. I apologize again, that this has been going on for the last couple of days, and and I apologize you didn't get the copy of that.
Well, and then on the other side, you see your parking lot aisle.
Yeah, right, the other side, exactly, as you mentioned, Chairman Fitzpatrick. Clearly, that could could connect to the property to the east if that was ever to be, you know, available or developed.
All right, I think we understand what you're after. You you've done your work. I think we need to put this to a vote and move through the rest of the agenda. Does anyone have any other comments?
If I care, man, I do.
Yes, Kay.
David or Jeff, uh, how many parking spaces are you providing?
We do not have a parking reduction uh here built in uh to the project. Commissioner and Luke Way.
The reason I'm asking, um, Kelsey, can you go back to the site plan again, please? The this, the single point, the single point entry. I'm not sure if it's going to be a bottleneck for the residents in that in in the complex. Not know how many parking spaces you have, but that I'm thinking, is it possible?
Okay, the plan says one hundred and fourteen parking spaces in the center.
Okay. Okay. So what I'm saying, you know, that it may be a bottleneck for the, for the residents. Is it possible to find a way where the two long bars from a 90 degrees angle to drive into, what is the name of the street? It looks like it says.
Maryland and Woodland.
Yeah, Roland, Roland, is it Roland Street or Roland Court?
Ma- Maryland Avenue is the east-west street.
Okay. Is it possible to bust through there and create another point of entrance into, into the complex to ease?
Not, at this point, it's not. That, that's a city alley that dead ends and we don't control the two parcels. And, and again, as, as, as David mentioned, um, unfortunately, we've tried and that's in a dispute. So at, at this point, Commissioner, that's not possible because that, that's, that's going over private property to match up to that city alley.
Okay. Beside that, I, looking at your outside plan, I think considering what you have to deal with, it looks like that, but the site plan is as, as good as I think it could be considering the topography and the shape of the property. So, but I, I, I build it, build it E. How many stories is building E? Two. Two. So, so that, that ties off with the, be, I think it looks like it's in context with the other houses along Maryland Avenue there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and anybody else have any comments before we go to the vote?
Yes, I have a few comments. I feel like this development looks like it belongs in New Albany or out on Hillier Room Road. And this is in, you know, in one of the, you know, quickest growing neighborhoods in the city. I also think that this population, if this is who you're serving, is burdened by the cost of cars. So why does it look like that? And why is it completely car-oriented when there's a giant Cota stop just down the way on Taylor? Um, and I just, I, I don't think that this serves the population in a built environment type of way that you're saying that this targets. The price points may serve in that way, but I do not find this to be a walkable development at all. I don't feel like there's any kind of access to any of the transit that is very close by. I mean, there are, OSU East is right across the street, kind of diagonal. So I, I don't think that this development fits well here at all. And I don't think it's built in a way that serves the neighborhood, even though it has the full approval of the commission.
Okay, any, any other comments? All right, I think it is time to call the roll.
Maria Conroy. Do concur with, with Amanda's point. The walkability thing is, is, is really disturbing. But at this point, I will, I will say yes, and I'm going to rely on my colleagues to do their, their point.
Amanda Golden.
No.
Don Ingramson.
Yes.
Kay on Wookway.
Yes.
Marty Anderson.
No.
Sheriff Fitzpatrick.
Yes. Okay, you have a four to two vote. And you will go forward to city council.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Time to, to tweak and, and modify. Okay, we are now ready for case number two. Z20 day 089, 359 East Marcusson Avenue.
There are three letters in opposition of this request in your supplemental packets. I also want to acknowledge that there was a typo in the agenda heading. This AR request is asking for a height just like 35 feet, not 60.
That's a big difference.
Sorry, one second. Okay, the point six one acre site consists of four total parcels in the R2F residential district. The northern parcel is developed with a religious facility while the southern three parcels are developed with a parking lot. The requested AR1 apartment residential district will permit redevelopment of the site with a multi-unit residential development. The site is surrounded to the north, south, east and west by a mix of single and two-unit dwellings, all in the R2F residential district. Concurrent CV20 dash 103 has been filed demonstrating a multi-unit residential development totaling 17 units and includes variances to the permitted arrangement of dwelling units, parking, parking arrangement, minimum number of parking spaces required, vision clearance, building setback, block coverage and perimeter guard. Uh, that request will be heard by city council and will not be considered at this development commission meeting. The site is within the planning boundaries of the south side plan, which recommends medium-high density residential uses for the northern parcel and institutional uses on the southern three parcels. Uh, the site is also within an area that has early adoption of the C2P2 planning policies, design guidelines. Uh, the site is located within the boundaries of the Columbus Southside Area Commission, whose recommendation is for approval. The requested AR1 apartment residential district permits the site to be redeveloped with a multi-unit residential development. The AR1 apartment residential district allows a maximum density of 36.3 dwelling units per acre. While the south side plan recommends medium-high density residential uses and institutional uses for the site, the proposed district will not add incompatible uses to the area and therefore city department's recommendation is for approval.
Okay, any questions or comments? Uh, Dan Traffic.
No traffic issues.
And Kathy.
No recreation parks issues.
Okay, we have three letters which came in the supplemental packet in opposition. The staff report is in disapproval. David, are you the representative here?
Yes, sir.
Make your presentation, please.
Okay, great, thanks. It's, um, may not be abundantly clear here, but we, on this one, worked very hard with, uh, with both city planning as well as historic preservation on how to get this site plan right, which is how we arrived at preserving the, the bell tower of the church uh, at the corner here as a nod to the, to, to what this has been. It is here with a unanimous recommendation of approval from Columbus Southside Area Commission. I, I think I saw Curtis Davis on here someplace and he can certainly speak for himself. I joked as I came through this process with the neighborhood that i- if I were coming in requesting to knock down some houses and create a parking lot in the middle of this residential neighborhood, they'd run me out with pitchforks. This takes, uh, this church property, preserves a historic component of it, takes that church's parking lot, uh, puts it to a residential use that is, uh, consistent with the, with the character of, of not just Marion, but all over Columbus's south side. Uh, I think if you closely read, uh, the opposition, uh, letters or emails that are in the packet, which I just received earlier today and, and was a little surprised to see based upon our, uh, experience with the, with the commission, you'll note that some of that, uh, is, is involved with the rezoning, you know, out of the R2F into an apartment residential district. You know, that's a product of sort of the direction we've taken from a zoning perspective in terms of not just going into R2F zonings in the, in this type of neighborhood and doing a council variance to arrive at the same place. The city has said they want the underlying zoning to match the density of what you're trying to do. So that's the zoning with the companion council variance. We are committing to site plan. We are committing to the architectural character of the project. Grateful for the, for the round approvals here on this one. And, uh, Architect John Barnes is here. Between the two of us, we'll do our best to answer questions if there are any.
All right. Any questions for David from the commission?
Chair, I believe there may be, uh, there may be speakers on the line against this, just FYI.
Okay, in addition to the letters, are the same people?
I'm not sure.
All right, uh, let's ask them to step forward and, and give us three minutes of comment and then we'll consider their input and discuss this. Wave your hand or hit the, hit the mute button if you are within the sound of my voice.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I was raising my hand there. Um, my letter may be one of the same, but I'll, I'll keep it very brief to keep it moving. You know, I heard this presentation twice at the Marion Village Association. And, um, you know, I think a lot of the concerns that were expressed were over changing, changing, you know, that property to being um, apartment zoning versus residential. And just that the site plan that we were presented, um, just doesn't fit immediately in this neighborhood. Too, too big, too many units and several neighbors all expressed that. It failed the vote pretty widely in Marion Village. I'm not sure where the south side commission seemingly, apparently says it's better. But, um, you know, there was just a lot of neighborly concern over this project and it seems by giving it to AR1 zoning, um, you know, it sort of opens it to, to being able to build whatever they'd like here. And I guess those are just the concerns I'd like to express.
Can you, can you please state your name for the record?
Uh, yeah, I'm Jeff Lukey.
All right, is there another speaker in the call room? Okay, hearing none. Let's go back to David Hodge. David, you heard, uh, the city, uh, has half a page of, of reasons that they want revisions made. I'm sure you've seen these things. Please weigh in on your comments.
Did you say that again, Sheriff Fitzpatrick?
Yes, uh, the city staff is in disapproval.
No, we're, we have heard those lines.
No, that's not right.
Okay, I was looking at the next case.
No, we're approval.
All right, never mind. All right. Is there anything else you want to add, David?
No. The Columbus Southside Area Commission, you know, went, went into this thing eyes wide open. Uh, they were perfectly aware of the, of the Marion Village vote in that process. Columbus Southside Area Commission members take their jobs pretty seriously. I know you guys have seen them a number of times here recently, uh, go out in the field, um, study the issues. And they were comfortable, uh, concluding that we were able to successfully work with city planning, uh, and them and unanimously recommended approval. This is a great infill project, uh, uh, here and we're grateful for the staff approval and the commission approval.
You have a 14 to zero vote with the area commission. All right. Okay, any other comments from the commission? Please call a roll.
Amanda Golden.
Yes.
Don Ingramson. You're muted, Don. We will come back to John. Kay on Wookway.
Yes, yes, yes.
Marty Anderson.
Yes.
Marty Anderson.
I said yes, I was muted.
Maria Conroy.
Yeah.
And John, are you there?
Yes, 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 yes.
Sheriff Fitzpatrick.
Yes, you're approved. Okay, now to case number three. Z20 day 081, 3301 Bryce Road.
In your supplemental packet for this case are a few materials. There's an updated site plan, an updated limitation text, which addresses some of the Division of Traffic Management comments, a summary of the remaining open items from planning and traffic, the email chains from planning, traffic and recreation and parks, explaining how some of the comments from the staff report have been addressed. And then also an email from, uh, Officer Poole, one of the community liaisons from the Division of Police. This application was tabled at the January and February 2021 Development Commission meetings to allow for more time for planning and traffic issues to be resolved. The site consists of two undeveloped parcels in the R Rural District. The requested LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District will allow a multi-unit residential development with a maximum of 360 dwelling units. To the north of the site is a single unit dwelling in our rural district. The south is undeveloped land in our rural district. To the east, across Bryce Road, are multi-unit residential developments in the LARLD Limited Apartment Residential and AR12 Apartment Residential District. Single unit dwellings in SR Suburban Residential District and undeveloped land in the R Rural District. To the west, undeveloped land and single unit dwellings in LR2 Limited Residential. These land use plan, which recommends very low-density residential and open space uses for this location. Additionally, the plan includes adoption of Columbus Citywide Planning Policy Design Guidelines. C2P2 states that densities higher than the recommended four units per acre may be appropriate where more intense uses are present. C2P2 also states that ecologically sensitive areas be preserved through site design. The site is located within the boundaries of the Greater Southeast Area Commission, whose recommendation is for approval. The limitation text commits to a site plan and building rendering and includes provisions for density, setbacks, traffic commitments and landscaping. The requested LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District will allow a multi-unit residential development. Pulling up, uh, the staff review or the additional notes in the supplemental packet explaining, um, what additional comments are still outstanding. Planning is now in supportive conditions with the remaining condition being of North Trail Connection Point. Um, David Hodge, applicant, can kind of address, um, where, where kind of they stand in terms of working with planning in terms of the North Trail Connection. But all of their planning comments, as outlined in the staff report, have been addressed. In terms of Division of Traffic Management, um, they have made some minor modifications to the text, which is shown in the supplemental packet. And the Division of Traffic Management is conditionally supportive of the application. However, there are a few remaining items to be addressed based upon, uh, the traffic impact study. There are numerical revisions that relate primarily to volume adjustments associated with the COVID pandemic and the results of the study are not likely to be affected. The applicant has committed to constructing left turn lanes at the site access point to Bryce Road. The Division of Traffic Management and applicant are also coordinating on the location and design of pedestrian crossing infrastructure that would promote active transportation between the site and nearby retail uses along Gander Road, as well as provide a connection to the regional trail network for the existing residential neighborhood on the east side of Bryce Road. The result of this effort will be documented in the final traffic impact study and these improvements will be taken into consideration to potentially be performed in lieu of other typical traffic impact study requirements that would be applicable to the site, which is the south side right turn lane at the northern site access point to Bryce Road and/or a proportional contribution for potential transportation improvements at the intersection of Bryce Road and Chandler Road. So once those comments from Traffic Management are addressed and the trail connection, uh, point is worked out with planning, SaaS recommendation will be updated to approval. In the meantime, SaaS recommendation is for disapproval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, another hybrid. Dan, anything that hasn't already been said about traffic?
Yeah, just, uh, you know, reiterate, uh, we're, we're not expecting any significant changes with the revised traffic impact study. Um, primarily right now, we're working, uh, with other staff, both the Division of Traffic Management and the applicant, um, on the pedestrian crossing infrastructure, getting some more details, um, to work that out before finalizing, uh, the commitment on this application.
Is that something that can be worked out within a month realistically? Is that something that can be worked out within a month realistically?
Yeah, we think so.
All right, Kathy?
Our comments have all been addressed.
Okay. Are there any speakers or anybody that's here to oppose this? Okay.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir. Oh, okay.
Okay.
Tim Snyder?
Hello?
I don't see.
Namon Strickland, correct? Is your name Namon Strickland?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, please give us your comments.
Okay, I live on Bryce Road. It's right across the street from me. I'm wondering if we're going to get this traffic study done before the project is. I'm wondering, they had mentioned when they were talking to the area commission about doing a sidewalk from the front of the property up to Refugie Road or Chatterton Road, whichever you would rather refer it. I don't know, this is the third apartment complex that's been put here in the last year and a half. Sort of getting crowded. And I know it ain't Bexley. But it's sort of turning into apartment city. So my question being the traffic study, when will it be complete? Are you going to approve the project to go ahead, go on without it? There is no berm of the road. There's people that get hit here every year because there is no sidewalk. The project next to me, the CVS that was built, the sidewalk that was supposed to go in front of it, never did go in front of it, never will go in front of it. It's vacant now and still owned by CVS.
All right, well, those are very legitimate questions, and we will take those up. I can, I can, I think, say that not only can they not build this without the traffic study being completed and signed off on, but they can't even complete the zoning until the traffic study is completed, reviewed, and agreed upon. Sidewalks we'll talk about with the applicant. Is there another speaker regarding application number three on Bryce Road? Is there anything lighting up on your dial, Shannon? Okay, David Hodge, give us your comments regarding sidewalk request along the frontage.
Sure, thanks. David Hodge, attorney for the applicant. Kelsey, I don't know if you're able to bring up that plan that shows what we're going to do in terms of the frontage. In working through, right, perfect, the last one, perfect. In working through this process with the area commission, my client committed to do this trail that you see all along the frontage of the property. The trail is actually going to extend clear to the north to Chatterton. As you can see, on the east side of Bryce Road, there is significant development over there. When people now come over to Bryce to walk north, they are walking along the side of the road. So no sidewalk, no nothing to get folks up. As a part of this project, my client will extend the trail along the frontage clear to the north, which serves not just this project, but that existing development on the east side of the road. We've also been in discussions with Franklin County Metro Parks to take the trail to the south of the property and tie it into the Black Lake Trail, which is just off the screen down to the south. That will most likely happen as a part of this. This was before you a couple months ago. I think the comment made was that it was a half baked cake. We've taken two months to do everything we can to have the cake ready to eat tonight. As recent as yesterday, we had some back and forth commentary with Traffic Management regarding the traffic impact study. Put everything in our text that was requested of us in terms of turn lane improvements and a pedestrian crossing feature that'll go out here on Bryce Road so that certainly the folks on the east side of the road can cross over here to the west and get up to the north to the commercial intersection. Lots of work in the last couple of months with recreation and parks. You heard from Ms. Spats. They are satisfied with what's going on. I do know, I do see a member of the area commission here. It's a recommendation of approval from them. You know, we think we've, we think, we know, we've worked hard with all of the various agencies of the city that have their input. We've taken their input and incorporated it here into the plan that you see on the screen. And in some ways, we've gone kind of above and beyond the call of duty to take this trail a significant way up north to Chatterton. So hopefully the cake's baked and ready to eat, but we'll do our best to answer questions. My client, Mark Catalano, with Fairway Realty is also on if there are any questions of him.
All right, does any commission member have any questions of the applicant or Mr. Catalano? All right, David, you know that your client will have to make, coordinate his agreements with the Traffic Division before this can go to city council. And if that's not done, can't go to city council, or you may have to come back to us. You understand that?
Yes, sir.
All right, we need a motion to incorporate the 31121 text with this application. Somebody unmute and hit.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, please call roll.
John Ingerson.
Oh, there she goes, sorry. Go ahead, Kelsey.
John Ingerson?
Yes.
Marty Anderson?
Only because I don't believe in conditional approval, and I don't think the traffic issues are totally resolved. I hear everything. I will respect everybody who disagrees with me. My no vote is based strictly on the fact that it's conditional.
Kayon Luque?
Yes.
Maria Conroy?
I agree with Marty, but I am going to go yes.
Amanda Golden?
Yes.
Sheriff Fitzpatrick?
When I first looked at this, when I got the package, I underlined about 20 things in the the staff's recommendations, and I wrote down, this is not ready as submitted. So hats off to the applicant and your client for playing a great game of catch up to get all these loose ends tied up. Unfortunately, couldn't get them all tied up, but I think you're within range, and I will vote yes as well, so you are approved.
Thank you all.
Okay, case number four, Z20 day 098, 3470 Snoffler Road.
The site consists of one parcel developed with a single unit dwelling zoned in the RR Rural Residential District. The requested R4 Residential District will permit redevelopment of the site with a dwelling containing up to four units. To the north and east of the site are multi-unit residential developments in the C2 Commercial and LC4 Limited Commercial District. To the west is a daycare facility and the LC1 Commercial Limited Commercial District. To the south across Snoffler Road are single unit dwellings in the RR District and in Perry Township. The site is located within the boundaries of the Northwest Plan, which recommends office land uses at this location. The site is located within the boundaries of the Far Northwest Coalition, whose recommendation is for approval. Concurrent CV20-116 has been filed to reduce the rear yard requirement for proposed three unit dwellings. That request will be heard by city council and will not be considered at this development commission meeting. The requested R4 Residential District will allow redevelopment of the site with a dwelling containing up to four units. The Northwest Plan recommends office land uses at this location and states that new development safe public streets and incorporate usable open space. Planning Division staff would consider support for multi-unit residential zoning district at this site due to the size of the parcel defined as the proposed site plan associated with concurrent CV20-116 to be inconsistent with the recommendations of the plan and therefore does not support the rezoning request. Therefore, city department's recommendation is for disapproval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from the commission? Take any traffic questions?
No traffic issues.
Kathy, any recreation and parks?
No recreation and park issues.
Okay, Jeff Brown, I see you here. Do you want to add anything to the staff's presentation?
Yes, please. Jeff Brown, attorney with Smith &amp; Hill, representing the applicant. As you saw from the aerial, this is the leftover piece in this section of Snoffler Road. It's the last remaining single family house. To the east and behind me is a three story extended stay. To the west is a daycare. My client was looking at providing some housing for empty nesters, wanted to do a three unit building. He also has relationships with senior service providers. So this would be kind of a transitional location if you left your house and before you really needed heavy duty assistance. And so when we looked at this design, we showed that to the neighborhood, and the neighborhood recommended approval of the request. When I talked with planning about their issues, for only the second time in over a 40-year career, they told me I needed more units. What they would support is a two-story building. I went back and talked to my client about being able to do that. You know, his program is empty nesters, which would mean single story flats, and that's what we had proposed. So we can't do what planning wants, which was add more units. I did look from a design standpoint in terms of our site. It's very narrow but deep. We tried to dress up the end that faces Snoffler Road, the elevation. We extended the water table on the Snoffler roadside. We added two windows to that elevation, which is for the garage to kind of dress it up. So I'm in a situation where it's the leftover piece that really probably should have been picked up by the extended stay and developed like that, but it's a single family house. The woman has died. We need to do something else with it, and I think a three unit flats there would work. And so did the neighborhood in terms of supporting it.
Okay, are there any speakers that are in opposition to this? Any other comments or questions by commission members?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask the same question I asked before, and I already know the answer to it. Is anybody from planning here? So that we could question them. It's very frustrating to have planning be opinionated one way or the other, and I respect their opinion and not have anyone here to, you know, ask for input. Haley, I assume nobody's here from planning?
No one's here from planning tonight.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to let you guys know that Planning Division does know that you would really like their presence at the meetings. And they say that they're trying to work on a solution to that, and hopefully it will be in place either later this year or by next year.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
They're invited to come in their sweatpants and don't have to get dressed up. Okay, I think this is pretty cut and dry, pretty clear. I think we can call the roll.
Kayon Luque?
Yes.
Marty Anderson?
Yes.
Maria Conroy?
Yes.
Amanda Golden?
Yes.
Dawn Ingerson?
Yes.
Sheriff Fitzpatrick?
Yes, you are approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we will go on to case number five, Z20 day 094, 199 South Ohio Avenue.
The site consists of three undeveloped parcels in the R3 Residential District. The applicant proposes the AR1 Apartment Residential District to permit a multi-unit residential development. The north, south, and west of the site are single unit dwellings in the R3 Residential District. To the east are multi-unit dwellings in the ARLD Apartment Residential District. Concurrent CV20-109 has been filed to reduce vision clearance triangle, building lines, perimeter yard, and to increase the lot coverage for a proposed 11 unit development. That request will be heard by city council and will not be considered at this development commission meeting. The site is within the planning area of the Near East Area Plan, which does not recommend a land use for this location, but does recommend that new housing be consistent with the housing type, density, and development pattern of the neighborhood. The site is located within the boundaries of the Near East Area Commission, whose recommendation is for approval. The requested AR1 Apartment Residential District will allow a multi-unit residential development. The Near East Plan states that the overall goal of new construction is compatibility with the quality design that conforms to the existing building patterns and rhythm of the area. Existing homes will be used to determine the appropriate height, massing, scale, materials, porches, roof pitch, setbacks, and window and door proportions. The Planning Division supports the application based on unrestricted zoning district. Both the design related issues have been resolved, and that email from Planning Division is in your supplemental packet. The city department's recommendation is for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions? Okay, Dan, traffic issues?
No traffic issues.
Kathy?
No recreation park issues.
Okay. Are there any speakers here to speak for or against this project?
Chair, I believe Adam Wolf is speaking, and I don't know if there is anyone else.
All right, David, you want to add anything to the presentation or wait till the other speakers take their turn?
Let me just say that Dave Perry here as agent for the applicant, the applicant Tom O'Brien, O'Brien Development is on the call, and the architect, Karik Shural, is on also. We'll save other comment until you're ready.
Okay, let's hear from our Mr. Wolf.
Hello, my name is Adam Wolf. I'm a resident of 207 South Ohio Ave. So on that very first screenshot, I am the new build right next to this presented AR1 zoning. One of my first questions before buying that house was asking the zoning, and the zoning was residential. And when even speaking to others in the community, no one even knows that the land has been purchased, and no one has even been communicated on what's the plans with that development. The last that everyone knows, it's going to be brand new houses, like the model that has been built for my home and the three homes across the street. Obviously, with apartments comes a higher volume of traffic versus three residential homes. That is a concern from my neighbors and from the others that I speak to as well. There has not been one community neighbor that is in favor of these apartments going up here on this land, and let alone they have no acknowledgement of what's going on here today. With that being said, this is also a historical neighborhood, so just then a block away is Brighton Road. Brighton is a very historical district. Brighton is a very historical district with those homes that are on that street. And also, with that being said, to me, this is a money-making move in interest of the developer. This is a tax abatement area too, so there's no taxes being paid on the land. And with apartments, typically you don't see someone taking care of the property as someone led as a homeowner too. Just building up the community is one of the reasons that you put the tax abatement in place. Not for these real estate developers to come in and make, you know, higher margins on their profit. Again, I am not approved of this and one example would be the lot adjacent of the property is an empty lot. The building north of that adjacent lot is an apartment building. And just less than a year that I lived in the property here, there was a legal massage parlor that was taking place. So ask you yourself, if you want your individual kids, you want to grow up with, you know, raising your children. When there's illegal stuff that's happening within those apartments, less control, less that you can do within the neighborhood. Rather than those individuals taking care of it, if you do a hundred-yard radius of that property. There was over a dozen homes that cost over four hundred thousand dollars. Just saying that are going to be a little bit less, more expensive.
What's your street address, Mr. Wolf?
Two zero seven South Ohio Ave.
Okay.
And again, my neighbors that I talked to, no one's been acknowledged or informed. The only reason I have been informed. Because I open up my mail and I read it every single day. Otherwise, that's going to be my guess why no one else is here on the call. Otherwise, I could get at least a dozen people at least on the next call.
Okay, are you, are you ever notified by the Near East Area Commission when there's meetings? Or is there any communication between the Near East Area Commission and people like you?
No, sir.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Wolf by any of the members? Okay, Dave Perry, give us your thoughts and add anything you want to the staff's presentation.
Yep, sure thing. Thank you. This, the NEAC process, you know, I know we've talked about this before on the, before on different projects with the Development Commission. But the NEAC process is long and thorough. And there have been four meetings of the Near East Area Commission on this and on this project. And resulting in the Near East Area Commission's unanimous vote for approval. And that includes, that includes NEAC posting notice. So I did a quick look of two oh seven South Ohio. It's titled in Tricia Martin with a transfer date in March. So perhaps Mr. Wolf is related to Tricia, but the property is titled in Tricia Martin. And so we've been through, we've been through the four-meeting process with NEAC. Great unanimous support for this. The, one of the charms of the Near East Area Commission is that the diversity of housing. And relative to apartments, this is, this is a townhouse for sale project. And Mr. O'Brien, if he wishes to, can address sale issues. The projection is these units are in the, these units as townhouses will be in the four hundred thousand dollar area. So they are comparable to what Mr. Wolf mentioned. And, you know, I've handled the zoning on a lot of infill projects in the Near East Area Commission. One block north at, at Oak and Ohio. All three corners or three of the four corners have gone through zoning. One is being developed with townhouses. The other is, is being developed with a three-story building with commercial uses and two stories of apartments and other commercial uses on a historic building. And a detached two-unit building and then the north, oh, the north, northwest corner hasn't started development yet. But that's also an additional townhouse project, honestly, very similar to this. And so this, this is not anything unusual. We've been through the review of, of the extensive review of NEAC. And also of staff and there were, when, when Kelsey needed to issue the report, there were a couple minor outstanding items about landscaping and so on. Some of which was code required anyway. But, you know, the, you know, the review this goes through with all the different city departments. So I, I just, I don't know how a property owner could not know about this application given the NEAC process.
All right. Are these going to be condos or are these going to be individual titled?
They will be individually titled townhouse units. They will, they will not be split, you know, split units on a party wall. They will be condominiums.
David, do you, do you have any elevations at all?
I do, yes. Kelsey, did they get put in as concept elevations or, or no?
They did not. I just put the site plan in the, in the PowerPoint, not the elevation.
That's fine. The, John, the, the planning staff has reviewed the elevations and approved them. And so they are, they are not part of the zoning, but the council variance will commit the project to the site plan that is, is for the project.
Right, but I mean, would you say that they're similar to Oak and Ohio?
They are, they're three-story townhouses. Let me, let me ask Karik, the project architect, would, would you describe the units since we don't have the renderings?
Sure, they're your typical, they're really two and a half-story townhomes, peaked roof with, with dormers on each unit. There's quite a number of exterior, you know, spaces that are, excuse me, that have railings facing the street. As well as facing the interiors of the lot. So it's, it's, it's a rather common size and shape of, of current townhome development.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I just would like to, it would have been interesting to see them.
Yeah, I agree.
You're two, two blocks from my house. I'm watching a lot of development go on. But, you know, for, for the kind of ask, it would be nice to see something.
John, if the, if the staff, I have the elevations. If the staff wants me to share a screen, I can show them.
Yeah, I'm pulling it up right now.
Oh, here we go. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Great.
Is that Ohio Avenue on the left and Franklin on the right? Okay.
Yes.
I, I have no.
Screening, are you thinking along the connection to the house to the west there?
There's one.
Is there any buffering that you're planning?
Well, that, that was the, there's a, there's about twenty feet, twenty-two feet that's open between that west townhouse building and a rear detached garage building. And that, that twenty feet will meet the screening requirements of the zoning code and that's five feet, seventy-five percent opacity. And actually, Mr. O'Brien is, is planning the use of, of six to seven-foot arbor vida for a, you know, for a live screen rather than fencing.
Good. Okay, that answers that.
Is there an opportunity for me to rebuttal at all?
All right, yeah, can you get that done in about sixty seconds?
Yeah, absolutely. So just so you know, my fiance, I have two other properties, so I cannot put this in my name. So that is my fiance that owns the property. But here Sally is the lady that sold it, who's over the age of eighty. Here is the people that take care of her that live right next to me. When I asked about what's going on, as soon as I got the letter, I sent her a letter and they say, oh crap, I knew Miss Sally sold it on Franklin. But the land to the neighbors, the land, they must be trying to rezone it from the regular residential multi-unit apartments. Bleep developers. Ohio Ave is not historical like Brighton, so they must want to build something there to make a ton of money. Keep us posted. We don't want this to happen. Again, I'm thirty-one years old of age, but I had no knowledge about this. You did not hear one thing about community support. You have no buy-in from everyone that's surrounded by it. Again, I walked around the neighborhood last night too, talking to the other locals. Not one person is in support of this. So that would be the first.
Members of the commission, the title has not changed and the developer is not building apartments.
I would recommend that people get more active than their neighborhood commissions. Because this is, this is not the first time, even tonight, that we've heard somebody say they didn't know anything. When the area commission voted nine to nothing or fourteen to nothing in favor of the same thing they're opposed to. So these, these area commission meetings need to get out there and get more input from the stakeholders. But we've got to go on the information we have at hand. I don't think, oh, we do need to have a motion to include. The revised three eleven twenty-one text with this application. If somebody will give me that motion.
This is an unrestricted zoning district.
Yeah, there's no text.
Okay, no text.
Move.
Okay, this, this was the.
Also, I moved in March twenty-seventh last year, COVID. Haven't had the opportunity to really do anything outside of the house.
All right, we're going to call the roll on this case. Without any motions needed. Please call the roll.
Marty Anderson.
I'm voting yes, but I'm going to express my dismay that neighbors aren't receiving notice. I don't know where the, where the drop-off is. I don't know why someone as close as Mr. Wolf. And or his fiance live wouldn't have noticed. And then I see an area commission, you know, unanimous vote for approval. So something, something.
Quickly. My name is Dan Daniels of Oregon. I live across the street from this property. I've lived here for over thirty years. I know Sally personally and she told me specifically, her plan was to build a single house on those three lots. The first I heard that they were going to do something about this is when I received this in the mail about a week ago. I reached out to my real estate agent who gave me the information of what's going on with this property. This is the first time that I've heard anything about multiple family homes going into that lot.
Thank you, Dan. I've never met you because of COVID, but I appreciate this.
We got to get back to the, we got to get back to business here, John.
I'm sorry, Mike. I also tried to message you because I live next door. We're on ten eighty-five Franklin. And I've also known Sally for eight years. Listen, the, the main thing I want to say is I have information that one of the commissioners at the NAIC voted no. On both occasions. And so I'm trying to confirm exactly right now. And so I, I'm hearing something different. And I wanted to, to ask about that because if that information is not correct, that's important. And second of all, we actually, we're not opposing this stuff being built up, but we are extremely, necessarily, but we are extremely concerned. But there was no communication. I also received nothing until I got your city letter. And I've known her for years. She saw me walking around with my baby the other day and she didn't say anything. And so, and we also were told that those were going to be houses. And so this is, this is, please don't rush to saying yes. Like either table this or please vote no for further information because this is not okay. People have invested in this neighborhood. And it shouldn't be passing like this right away. And I, I haven't met Mr. Wolf. We're literally behind each other, but it's COVID. Nobody has been connecting. So please don't rush to saying yes. Like we need a little more time.
All right, we'll, we'll vote, we'll vote. And then you have a month between this recommendation to city council, whatever it is. And city council will take the actual action on the property. It's, I agree with Marty. It's, it's, it's not good that people who are the most involved stakeholders. Aren't involved in the area commission activity and then it comes to us and we have to make a move. We have to get back to the vote and move on with this agenda. We've got, we're, we're not even halfway through it. Okay, please call the roll. You started with Marty. She was interrupted. Please let the vote go. Marty?
I said that I voted yes, but I was very troubled by what I'm hearing about the area commission. And I really encourage the residents to dig deeper and, and have as much information as they can before this goes to city council.
Maria Conroy.
Since Marty's vote was already cast, I will take Marty's typical position here. I'm going to vote no, just to make sure that there is a, there are some good eyes on this. I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, any procedural issues that may be at play.
Amanda Golden.
This is Amanda Golden and I vote yes. I think that the renderings are nice. I think they'll fit nicely within the neighborhood and I vote yes.
John Ingerson.
John, you're muted again.
I would hope that these elevations are committed to. I know that they're.
It will be committed to with the council variance.
So I am familiar with, very familiar with NEAC. And I implore the neighbors to get involved. This is pretty consistent with what's been going on in the neighborhood, of which I've been a resident for thirty years. And I'm going to, I'm going to vote yes, but I do have some reservations that, that notice was missed.
Kay Ann Luque.
I agree with both Marty and John. I, I know very much about NEAC. NEAC is a, NEAC is a very well-run neighborhood association. So for the neighbors to miss the invitation or the hearing is something I think they need to take up upon themselves to find out why. The architecture, I think, is in context with what is existing in the neighborhood. So for that reason, I'm voting yes.
Sheriff Fitzpatrick.
Okay, before I cast my vote, I don't know if the people that spoke can see. We have a form we fill out with information and since Maria voted no, that's a split vote. This, this basis form for our recommendations will go to city council and will express our concern. And why we voted the way we voted. So city council will see copy of each one of our comments regarding this action tonight. I personally wrote a note about the area commissions being more stringent and getting communications out to the, to the most local of all stakeholders. So I vote yes as well. You will go, you will go to city council approximately a month. Okay, we now go to case number six, Z twenty dash, yes.
Sheriff Fitzpatrick, Dave Perry, I'll, I'll check on the NEAC issues also. NEAC has done public notice for, for thirty years. And, but I, I'll, I'll check on that. I mean, clearly that'll be a question at council anyway.
Why? And it's, it's, I think it's a case of who's moving the ball forward. If, if, if people open up, or open up their mailbox and take out twelve envelopes. And something looks like it's not that meaningful, it gets set aside. And that might be a kind of a form letter from NEAC that didn't get responded to. So who's going to take the proactive action and how's that action taken? Okay, this is going forward to city council and they will be updated with everyone on the commission's comments. Now, case number six, Z twenty day zero dash one oh seven, nine eighty, East Rich Street.
The zero point three-five acre site consists of two undeveloped parcels zoned in the R three residential district. The requested AR three apartment residential district will permit multi-unit residential development. The north of the site are single unit dwellings in the R three residential district. To the east and west are single and two-unit dwellings in the R three residential district. To the south across each East Rich Street are an apartment complex, undeveloped lots, and a single unit dwelling in the ARLD apartment residential district. The site is within the planning area of the Near East Area Plan, which does not recommend a land use for this location, but recommends that new. but recommends that new housing be consistent with the housing types, density and development pattern of the neighborhood. The Planning Division staff generally supports proposed use and density based on location of the parcel and other nearby apartment developments. Concurrent CB twenty dash one twenty one proposes a nineteen unit apartment building with variances for reduced parking lot tree island area and a parking space reduction from twenty nine spaces to nineteen spaces. That request will not be discussed at this meeting and will be considered by city council. The site is located in the boundaries of the Near East Area Commission, whose recommendation is for approval. The requested AR three apartment residential district will allow a residential development that is compatible with the density of nearby multi-unit residential developments. Additionally, Planning Division staff finds the site plan and conceptual elevations for the proposed new apartment building proposed with concurrent CB twenty dash one twenty one to be consistent with the Near East Area Plan's design guidelines, making this redevelopment of the sites supportable. The request is compatible with recent infill development proposals in the area and therefore staff's recommendation is for approval and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, Dan, traffic issues?
No traffic issues.
And Kathy, recreation and parks concerns?
No recreation parks concerns.
Okay. Dave, is this yours?
Yes.
Do you want to add anything to the staff presentation?
Just Dave Perry here as agent for Blue Chip Homes and we have Lonnie Freeman, Blue Chip Homes and Kevin Parsik with Gunsman Architecture on the call also if there are any questions.
Okay, let's ask any comments or questions from commission members. I'm here to speak regarding this application. Marty, did you say something?
Yeah, I just have a quick question for Dave. I know it's not before us, but why the proposed reduction in parking spaces for my application?
Well, it's the urban projects have typically been at about one to one point one spaces per unit, Marty, because of balancing site sizes, density and and a general interest of, I would say, a general interest of the city in reducing parking. And supporting reduced parking. The site's on a, the site's on a bus line and is very much of an urban site.
Okay, I just wanted to, thank you.
Okay. Are there any speakers regarding this application tonight?
Nobody registered with us. I don't, Scott, did you want to speak? Okay, there's a spot that would like.
Yeah. I don't know if you just put up the pictures of the neighborhood you just showed again. I'm the house, it's not even showing. These pictures are very old because I moved into this house. It's a brand new build. Not of this one, rather, one of the neighborhood, the streets across where it shows a south. It shows the directional houses, not, not that one, yeah. Where it says south right there, there's a brand new house that's sitting right there. These pictures are really old, so it doesn't really show the kind of progress this neighborhood has made. This is again, one of those tax abatement areas and it's the average, and I've lived on the other end of Wilson before I moved into this house, where I've lived on Rich Street for probably five or six years. In that time, there's probably been at least twenty houses that have been completely remodeled. Some of them are brand new. This apartment complex is not going to fit. There's already parking issues as it is. I can't believe they were attracting parking spaces because right now, thankfully, I have a house or a garage that parks on the alleyway that I can use. My neighbors park on the street. They've had their mirrors ripped off at least three times as I've lived here because of the parking is so tight. Cannot get two cars coming through either way. It's through one car at a time. And if it's a large car, odds are you're going to get your windows knocked off or your wind rearview mirrors knocked off. So I've lived there since November of last year. And this is the first I've ever heard anything about it. Granted, I haven't been as involved because I have just moved into this area right here. So I'm definitely going to protest this because there's no way that this is getting any kind of support.
Could you state your last name for the record, please?
Sure, it's Michael Scott Hostetler, H O S T E T T L E R, and I'm at nine seven seven East Rich Street, which is a brand new build. So sometimes it's not showing up on people's searches.
Yes, I apologize for that. Because of the pandemic, we're not doing the fieldwork that we would usually do. So we're relying on our Google, Google images and county editor information, but I will be sure to take, take updated pictures for the city council presentation.
Yeah, because it really is this area. The average house alone now on this street costs about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars because I know I just refinanced. So I know we did we got, they did checks all up and down the street of the average housing cost now. So this area is growing up nice and this apartment complex is just going to be horrible for parking for those people who have to park on the street. And frankly, they don't even look very nice now as opposed to the last development that was going up that they showed because it looked pretty nice, actually. It would be better for townhouses, actually. Yeah, and I, when we bought this place, I was told that because my realtor was looking into buying that property too. And this was November of last year and we've talked to him a few times and he had been trying to purchase it. So I know it hasn't been that long since that was made.
Okay, I think we're, need to get back to the template here and we've had our input. If there's not any questions or comments, we will call for the vote.
Mister, Mister Chairman, I, let me just add, these are all, these are all one bedroom apartments and you know, and again, this, the parking variances are reviewed extensively these days by the traffic and parking services staff and there, there's a support for the variant.
Okay. Okay. Please call the roll.
Maria Conroy. Yes. Amanda Golden.
Yes.
John Ingerson.
Yes.
Kay Fitzpatrick, or Can Luque.
Yes.
Marty Anderson.
Yes, with my same strong concern about the Near East Area Commission and its ineffective reach out to neighbors or something, something's not right here. I just don't have reason to vote no.
Chair Fitzpatrick.
Okay, and I share Marty's observance, but I also vote yes. Okay, we're now to case number seven on the agenda. Set Z twenty dash zero ninety six teen thirty five Steltzer Road.
The three point nine seven acre site is developed with a dwelling and outbuildings and is zoned in the R rural district as a result of recent annexation from Mifflin Township. The requested LM Limited Manufacturing District will commit a contractor's office and storage development. North of the site is undeveloped land in the LM Limited Manufacturing District. To the east across Delta Road are single unit dwellings in Mifflin Township. To the south is a single unit dwelling in the R rural district. To the west is an office warehouse in the LM Limited Manufacturing District. The site is subject to the ISAC seventy graphics control overlay and is located within the boundaries of the Port Columbus Joint Economic Development Strategy, which recommends mixed use, land uses for this location. The site is also located within the boundaries of the Northeast Area Plan, which recommends office light industrial land uses for this location. The Northeast Area Plan Design Guidelines also state that industrial development should be designed to minimize or mitigate impacts on adjacent uses, especially residential uses through such means as landscaping, buffering and enhanced setbacks, and that stream corridors should be protected in a natural state. The site is located within the boundaries of the Northeast Area Commission, whose recommendation is for approval. The limitation text poses office and less objectionable manufacturing uses and includes development standards addressing setbacks, access, landscaping, screening, lighting and graphics controls and stream corridor protection. The requested LM Limited Manufacturing District will allow an industrial development that is compatible with the plan recommendations of both the Northeast Area Plan and the Port Columbus Joint Economic Development Strategy. The proposal also incorporates landscaping, screening and stream corridor production as recommended by the Northeast Area Plan Design Guidelines. The request is consistent with the zoning and development pattern of the area and therefore staff's recommendation is for approval. I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, questions for Shannon? Dan, traffic issues?
No traffic issues.
And Kathy, anything from recreation parks?
No recreation parks issues.
Okay. Are there any speakers wishing to weigh in on this application?
Just the applicant, Mr. Tim Snyder is here. I haven't heard from anybody else.
Okay, Mr. Snyder, is there anything you would like to add to the staff's presentation?
I will just give you all a little bit of history and background. My client purchased this property. It was at the time currently in Mifflin Township. We've obviously successfully went through the annexation process. And because of the nature of their business aligning with a lot of the LM zoning district property in that area, particularly in the City Gate Drive area of Steltzer Road, where this site is about eleven hundred feet south of that between there and the airport. The client, because of the fact that this is a female owned business, it's a family owned business. They do utility installations. They are partners with American Electric Power, Columbia Gas, Nationwide Realty Investors. They do some very specific type of utility type work. There will be no manufacturing at this site. It is simply a stationing point for their crews and trailers and materials to go out to jobs that they're doing in and around the central Ohio area. As part of the redevelopment of this, there were two old, very dilapidated structures that were raised. The client has invested money to reestablish the single family residential property that is currently there. It's only a very small house, about a thousand square feet that they plan to turn in to an office with the thought that they may relocate from Lancaster, Ohio, where they currently are now and possibly within the next three to five years would build a new office building there. And that is included in the limitation text that we submitted to Shannon Poynter.
Okay. Any commission member questions or comments? All right, let's put this one to the roll call book.
Amanda Golden.
Yes.
John Ingerson.
Yes.
Kay on Luque.
Yes.
Marty Anderson.
Yes.
Maria Conroy.
Yes.
Fitzpatrick.
Yes, you are approved. Okay, moving on to case number eight. Z twenty dash one one zero twenty three thirty seven North Cassidy Avenue.
The site consists of two undeveloped parcels zoned in the AR twelve and the ARLD apartment residential district. The requested LAR one limited apartment residential district will permit a multi-unit residential development with a maximum of six, two hundred and sixty four dwelling units. To the north of the site is an industrial facility under construction in the LM Limited Manufacturing District. To the south is a religious facility in the ARLD apartment residential district and a single unit dwelling split zoned in the R one residential and I institutional districts. East of the site across North Cassidy Avenue is a religious facility in the LC four limited commercial district. To the west are single unit dwellings, all split zoned in the R one residential and AR twelve apartment residential districts. The site is within the boundaries of the Northeast Area Plan, which recommends mixed use neighborhood center and Agler Cassidy mixed use center at this location. The site is located within the boundaries of the Northeast Area Commission, whose recommendation was pending the March fourth, twenty twenty one full commission meeting. It's my understanding that that recommendation has been received, but the, the form has not.
Do you know what the vote was?
I'm not sure.
Approval?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The companion CB twenty dash one twenty four has been filed to reduce the required building setback along Cassidy Avenue. That request will be heard by city council and will not be considered at this development commission meeting. The limitation text includes supplemental development standards that address maximum number of dwelling units, tree preservation and landscaping. Additionally, the limitation text contains commitments to develop the site in accordance with the submitted site plan and building elevation. The Columbus Multimodal Thoroughfare Plan identifies this portion of North Cassidy Avenue as a suburban community connector requiring a hundred and twenty feet of right of way. In your supplemental packet, you will see updated traffic comments of support of this rezoning request as well as a plan showing the access point from North Cassidy Avenue, a revised limitation text that address traffic comments and a updated site plan and elevations that address comments from the Northeast area, I'm sorry. Yes, the Northeast Area Commission meeting. The requested LA, LAR one limited apartment residential district will allow a multi-unit residential development containing a maximum of two hundred and sixty four units. The limitation text commits to a site plan and elevations which demonstrate compatibility with the design recommendations of the Northeast Area Plan and includes provisions for internal connectivity, tree preservation, reduced surface parking impact and the use of natural building materials. The requested zoning district is compatible with the plan's land use recommendation and does not represent an introduction of an incompatible use to the surrounding neighborhood. As the Division of Traffic Management has had time to review the supplemental information provided by the applicant from the time that the staff report was published to today. The Division of Traffic is in support of the rezoning request and just has a few minor comments that are detailed in that email on the first page of the supplemental packet. Some of those items have already been addressed in the limitation text dated today, three eleven twenty twenty one. So based on that, city department's recommendation has been updated to approval and I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Traffic issues, Dan?
Haley's pretty much covered it. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, I see the entry drive is aligned with the drive across the other side of the street. Kathy, any recreation and parks?
No recreation parks concerns.
Okay. The Jeff Brown, is there anything you want to add to the applicant?
Jeffrey L. Brown, attorney for the applicant. The revised drawings in terms of the site plan elevations in the text all reflect changes that were asked by city departments or the Northeast Area Commission. They heard this for the second time last Thursday and recommended approval of the request. Items such as doing a brick elevation on the buildings that face Cassidy. And they also asked us to flip the swimming pool. We had the swimming pool up front facing Cassidy. They asked us to flip it behind the clubhouse and also make the elevation of the clubhouse building that faces Cassidy brick. So the first building there of multifamily and the clubhouse elevation, those two elevations that face Cassidy will be brick per their request.
Okay. All right, any comments or questions from the commission members? Is anyone in the green room here to speak regarding this application?
No one had contacted me requesting to sign up, so.
Okay. That being the case, we have a three eleven text and a three nine twenty one letter from the traffic division. I'd like to see those, a motion to include those in the updated form of the.
Mister Chairman, I think you also have a site plan and elevation. So it's everything.
The whole package.
Yes, sir.
The site plan elevations. It's like updated three nine twenty one as well. Motion to move the supplemental package relative to this case into the application form.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, please call a roll.
John Ingriffen.
Yes.
Kayan Luque.
Yes.
Marty Anderson.
Yes.
Maria Conroy.
Yes.
Amanda Golden.
Yes.
Sheriff Fitzpatrick.
Yes, you are approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we go to case number nine, Z20-111, 2600 Stelter Road.
The 26.88 acre site consists of 12 undeveloped parcels which are zoned in the R rural district. The requested LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District will permit a multi-unit residential development. North of the site are single-unit dwellings in the QV Planned Unit Development District and in Mifflin Township. East of the site is Interstate 270. West of the site across Stelter Road is a multi-unit residential development in the LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District and undeveloped blocks in the SR Suburban Residential District. South of the site across Codet Road is undeveloped land slated for multi-unit residential development in the LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District. The site is within the boundaries of the Northeast Area Plan, which recommends institutional uses at this location resulting from ownership of the site by a church. Despite this recommendation, Planning Division staff recognizes the site's location along the Stelter Road Transit Corridor and proximity to East and Employment Center, which are sufficient factors for supporting a proposed use. The proposed site plan also incorporates design recommendations such as placing parking behind buildings and providing open space and pedestrian trails and connections. The site is located within the boundaries of Northeast Area Commission, whose recommendation is for approval. The limitation text includes a commitment to a site plan and elevation renderings along with development standards including maximum density, pedestrian connectivity, landscaping, and tree preservation. A traffic access study has been approved for the proposed development, and a commitment for a monetary contribution towards the future improvements to the intersection of Stelter Road and McCutcheon Road is included in the text. Concurrent Council variant CB20-126 has been filed to reduce the parking and building setbacks. That request will be heard by city council and will not be considered at this development commission meeting. The requested LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District will permit a multi-unit residential development with a maximum of 360 units. The limitation text includes a commitment to a site plan and elevation renderings along with development standards including maximum density, pedestrian connectivity, landscaping, and tree preservation. While the proposed use is inconsistent with the institutional land use recommendation of the Northeast Area Plan, staff recognizes the site location along the Stelter Road Transit Corridor and proximity to the Easton Employment Center, which are sufficient factors for supporting this proposed use. Additionally, the proposed site plan incorporates the plan's design recommendations such as placing parking behind buildings and providing open space and pedestrian trails and connections. The request does not represent an introduction of an incompatible use to the surrounding neighborhood. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval. And I will note that in the supplemental packet is a revised limitation text dated today, March 11. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the commission for Shannon? Okay, Dan, traffic issues?
All traffic issues have been resolved. Just wanted to note the development to the south is installing a traffic signal at the intersection of Stelter Road and Codet Road and completing other improvements to Codet Road.
Okay. And Kathy, recreation and parks?
No recreation park concerns.
Okay. Jeff, do you want to add anything to the staff's presentation?
Jeffrey L. Brown, attorney for the applicant. The site plan that you saw reflects the changes that were requested by staff. We have the support of the area commission. Joe Thomas, my client, is also on the line if you have any questions with him. I forgot to identify him for the last case.
That has to be a very tired commission. They've been involved in almost every case in tonight's agenda. Okay, any questions or comments from any of the commission members on what has been presented?
Mr. Chair, I have a very quick question for either Jeff or I'm looking at the limitation text dated 2/17/21, and that dated today. Can you just quickly give me a cheat sheet and tell me what the difference is?
Sure, Ms. Anderson. The city, one of their comments asked us to do a tree preservation area, and I wrote that text section too quickly. I didn't make any provision to removing diseased or dead trees or to allow for utility crossing. So I corrected that language to match the normal tree preservation language that the city has in the text.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any speakers regarding this application tonight? All right, you have staff approval, you have unanimous area commission approval, and no opposition, so I believe it's time to call a roll.
If you could accept the
To put the text in.
Thank you.
3/11/21 text, motion to insert that text.
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
All right, I don't know who that was, but please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 Okay, please call a roll.
Kayan Luque.
Yeah, this is just a side comment. It looks like the building elevations for number eight, application eight and nine, looks to be recycled. But having said that, my vote is yes.
Marty Anderson.
Yes.
Maria Conroy. I think Maria had to leave at 8 o'clock. She sent me a message. Amanda Golden.
Yes.
John Ingriffen.
Yes.
Sheriff Fitzpatrick.
Yes. Okay, you are approved, five to zero.
Thank you very much.
And we now go to case number 10. Z20-0723415 Vision Drive.
The site comprised of two parcels zoned in LP1 Limited Parking District is developed with a parking lot for the adjacent office development. The requested CPD Commercial Plan Development District will allow installation of roof-mounted solar panels on carports within the existing parking lot. To the north of the site is a parking lot in the LM Limited Manufacturing District. Also to the north and east is an office development in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. To the south, across Petrie Boulevard, is a school in the R1 Residential and RR Rural Residential Districts. To the west is undeveloped land in the LR Limited Rural Districts. The site is within the planning area of the Northeast Area Plan, which recommends office uses for this location. The plan also encourages the utilization of green building construction materials and methods in commercial design. The site is located within the boundaries of the Northeast Area Commission, whose recommendation is for approval. The development text commits to a site plan and includes provisions for setbacks, access, landscaping, building design, and signage commitments. A variance to eliminate the requirement for interior parking lot landscaping is included in this request. The requested CPD Commercial Plan Development District will allow installation of roof-mounted solar panels on carports within the existing parking lot, which is compatible with the adjacent commercial development. Proposal is also consistent with the land use and design recommendations of the Northeast Area Plan. City Department's recommendation is for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a quick question. So it needs a CPD in order to get the solar panels to set?
The LP1 district doesn't permit structures, and these are carport structures.
So the carport structures are new, and the solar panels are going on?
Correct.
Great, okay, thank you.
Chair, I think you're muted, Mike.
I'm muted. There should be a button in the center of your screen. If you hold your mouse kind of under everybody's pictures, you should see something that comes up with the microphone. Tim, could you try to, did you send a request to unmute? Or to, yeah, a request to unmute?
All right.
There you go. You're back.
All right, I guess the Northeast Area Commission didn't like my comments. Okay, traffic issues, Dan?
No traffic issues.
Kathy?
No recreation parks issues.
Okay. Are there any speakers regarding this application tonight? Stelter Road. Okay, Jeff Brown.
How about Mike Shannon?
Mike.
Mike Shannon.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions from anyone? This is unlike you, Michael, it's a pretty easy case.
It's the new me.
Are you going to get a rebuttal here, Mike?
I almost asked for it, but I didn't have enough courage.
Well, you can rebut yourself.
I think I did that the last couple of months, so.
All right. This looks way too easy. With no further ado, please call a roll.
Kayan Luque.
Yes.
Marty Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Amanda Golden.
Yes.
John Ingriffen.
Yes.
Sheriff Fitzpatrick.
Michael, this is a new record for you.
I'd like to thank Marty Anderson for making all this possible.
I meant it. Okay, we will move along with that.
Thank you.
No further ado, case number 11. Z20-01095940 Chantry Drive.
The site is developed with an eating and drinking establishment in the C4 Commercial District. The applicant requests the CPD Commercial Plan Development District to allow for a future lot split resulting in subarea A, the existing eating and drinking establishment, and subarea B to be developed to the new car wash facility. North of the site is a fuel sales facility in the C4 Commercial District. South of the site is commercial retail and an eating and drinking establishment in the C4 Commercial District. East of the site is a shopping center and eating and drinking establishment in the C4 Commercial District. West of the site is commercial development in the C4 Commercial District. The site is within the planning boundaries of the Far East Land Use Plan, which recommends mixed use to land uses at this location. And the plan includes complete adoption of the Columbus Citywide Planning Policies Design Guidelines. The site is located within the boundaries of the Far East Area Commission, whose recommendation is for approval. The CPD text establishes two subareas, use restrictions, and supplemental development standards that address building and parking setbacks, traffic access, parking lot landscaping, mounting and screening, street trees, and building materials. Variances for parking lot islands, parking lot screening, and parking setbacks in subarea A and for a no bypass lane in subarea B are included within the text. The text does include a commitment to develop the site in accordance with the submitted site plan. The requested CPD Commercial Plan Development District will permit a future lot split resulting in the existing eating and drinking establishment, subarea A, and a new car washing facility, subarea B. The CPD text establishes appropriate use restrictions and includes some development standards. While the proposed use is consistent with the Far East Land Use Plan's land use recommendation for mixed use too, the plan states that areas designated for mixed use should incorporate community commercial overlay standards and connect to other developments through streets, sidewalks, and pedestrian connectivity. Additionally, the C2P2 recommends green technologies to manage stormwater runoff in parking lots. Staffs would also like to mitigate the loss of parking lot shade trees with additional street trees and landscaping at the intersection of Bryce Road and Chantry Drive. These have not been met yet with the applicant's site plan and text, and therefore City Department's recommendation is for disapproval.
Okay, you still are disapproving at this point?
That's correct, mostly through comments from planning based on C2P2 design guidelines.
Okay. Dan, any traffic issues here?
No traffic issues.
And Kathy, recreation and parks?
There are no recreation parks issues.
Okay. Dave Perry, would you like to add anything to the staff's presentation?
Yes, I would. I'm here as agent for Mumu Car Wash, the proposed car wash developer and the property owner of Franklin Progressive Assets. On the call also is Jeff Gilger, who is VP of Development for Mumu Car Wash. So let's let's talk, let's see, Tim, can you go back to a picture of the site? Okay. So the site at the corner of Bryce and Chantry was developed in 1995. And there's a city site compliance plan approval for a 5,324 square foot restaurant at the time Ruby Tuesday's with 194 parking spaces. And that is almost three times the code required parking. And let's see, Tim or Haley, could we go to Ariel also? There we go, thank you. So we have a 1995 site construction with almost three times the required parking, 194 parking spaces. The parking lot is gigantic. So we have Mumu Car Wash proposing to develop subarea B in what is all excess parking relative to the restaurant. With this plan to CPD, the restaurant will remain in compliance with code required parking and number of parking lot trees. And the Mumu Car Wash, of course, as new construction, will comply with all current requirements. So we have a site that is fully developed with a gigantic amount of excess parking proposed to be, a portion of it proposed to be redeveloped by Mumu Car Wash. And I can say that everyone, city staff, planning, area commission, is in support of the use of the property with the addition of the car wash. We have, we have a couple of differences relative to the, to the staff report. So let me go, let me go through those. On trees, the planning staff has noted the loss of parking lot shade trees and requested trees to be planted in the right-of-way of Bryce and Chantry. Now, from aerial photography, this can look like trees. And aerial photography can be deceiving about trees and always warrants ground inspection. And in fact, in fact, many of these islands are developed with shrubs, or they have shrubs in them. I'm not saying that there aren't any mature trees, but many of the islands have shrubs. And many of the islands have, or the current site has islands that are non-compliant with the current codes. So on the variances that Tim mentioned for area A, which is the restaurant, which will remain a restaurant and is not planned to be redeveloped, I do have a couple of citations to the current code related to I do have a couple citations to the current code related to existing island sizes, parking lot island sizes that are not code compliant. And, and I have a citation for some of the restaurant pavement setback relative to Chantry. Chantry and Bryce, Bryce is an enormous right-of-way through this area. You can see where Tim has the black outline of the site relative to where the pavement is. But the variant citations in the CPD for Area A, the restaurant, just reflect a couple existing conditions. And, and again, the Mumu Car Wash will be fully code compliant with, as it, as it goes through the site compliance process, site compliance plan process later. So, I take issue with the loss of parking lot shade trees, number one, because many of them just have shrubs in them. And secondly, there is a Bryce Road Capital Improvements Plan. And we're being, we're being asked to plant trees in the right-of-way, which are not subject to any code regulation, as, as is the parking lot islands and parking lot trees, a requirement of the zoning code and a requirement of, of approved site compliance plans. So, so a grove of trees planted at the intersection is subject to removal with the Bryce Road widening plan, which, which is projected for 2026 or 2027, and subject to removal by any utility work by any utility provider. So, number one, I disagree with the loss of parking lot shade trees as opposed to shrubbery. And we don't believe that planting a grove of trees in the right-of-way at the intersection is appropriate or warranted. The, let's see, the on sidewalk, Mumu Car Wash will build the sidewalk applicable to their site. But we have a site that is predominantly developed and staying developed. And the, the planning staff request amounts to about an additional 560 feet of sidewalk versus the Mumu site. And 560 feet of sidewalk along Bryce Road, which is open ditch, which is subject to a road widening plan in a few years. Sidewalk, you know, sidewalk when the curb grades and, and site grades adjacent to sidewalk, that's one thing, but sidewalk, putting sidewalk on, on Mumu Car Wash for 560 feet of sidewalk with open ditch that involves piping the stormwater, backfilling sidewalk. And, and who knows what happens with the Bryce Road widening and improvements plan. It's just not, it's just not warranted, and it's out of scale with the Mumu development. So, those are the issues. There isn't, there isn't any disagreement about the use of the property. There's a comment in the staff report about green technologies. And, and I can tell you, Jeff Gilger can describe it more if you want to know about it. But Mumu Car Wash uses a technology that recovers almost 100% of the water, recycles it, and uses it for subsequent washes. So, that's where we are, that we have some differences of opinion on a couple technical points, but not on the use of the property. And the area commission was fully supportive as, as the application is before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments from commission members? Okay. Are there any speakers regarding this application tonight, neighbors?
Mike, I'd like to make a comment if I could.
Yes, John.
This is a clear case of, of the community commercial overlay being misapplied. If you take a look at this at your leisure on Google Earth, you will see scads of paving around, around this site, holding the standard of the CCO. On this, when you look back at the, even the aerial in that presentation, you'll see the Honda dealership's car inventory parked at the upper left of that up here. It's I just can't, sometimes planning and zoning just don't seem to sync up correctly. And I think that's one of these cases, and I think David Perry explained his, his points of contention very well. But I think this is, when we revise the code sometime in the near future, I think that these kinds of things need to be massaged.
Yeah, I agree, it's, it's, those are all good intentions, but not practical when you're gonna bulldoze everything in four years and change it all. Okay, any other comments or questions from the commission members? There are no speakers. You have seven to zero approval from the area commission. And I didn't mark this down. Did the staff disapproval change to approval? Or is it still disapproval?
Still in disapproval, Chair.
Okay, well, I think there's a practicality factor here that doesn't set a precedent in my mind. But we, we do not need a motion, please, there's a vote, so let's call for the vote right now.
Marty Anderson.
I'm gonna vote yes, just to encourage planning to send somebody to these meetings so we can ask questions and let them fully explain, you know, their recommendation for approval. And I don't like to do that, but I don't know any other way to get them here.
Amanda Golden.
Yes.
John Ingerson.
Yes.
Kayan Luque.
Yes.
Sheriff's Patrick.
Yes, you are approved.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, commission.
Well, you have one more case, case number 14. Z20-101, 3981 Bowen Road.
Before I begin, please see the updated limitation text, site plan, and open space exhibit, all dated March 9th, 2021. That reflects a slightly modified traffic access point to Long Road. That's in your supplemental packet. Additionally, there are two good neighbor agreements between the property owner and adjacent property owners that are there for your information. The, this application was tabled at the March 2021 Development Commission meeting to allow for more time for the applicant to acquire a recommendation from the Greater Southeast Area Commission. The 32.9 acre site consists of a single undeveloped parcel zoned PUD6 Plan Unit Development District, which permits 188 dwelling units at 5.71 dwelling units per acre. The applicant requests today the LAR12 Limited Apartment Residential District to permit a multi-unit residential development containing up to 336 apartment units at 10.21 dwelling units per acre. North of the site is a single unit dwelling in the R Rural District and a multi-unit residential development in the PUD6 Plan Unit Development District. South of the site is the Pickerington Pond Metro Park in the R Rural District. East and west of the site are single unit dwellings in the R Rural District in Madison Township. The site is within the planning boundaries of the Southeast Land Use Plan, which recommends low-density residential land uses at this location. Additionally, the site is within an area that has complete adoption of the Columbus Citywide Planning Policies Design Guidelines. The site is located within the boundaries of the Far East Area Commission, whose recommendation is for disapproval. The limitation text includes use restrictions and supplemental development standards that address the maximum number of apartment units, building and parking setbacks, building height, traffic access, roadway improvements, street arrangements, future traffic connections, trail connectivity, sidewalks, shared use paths, landscaping, fencing, mounting, street trees, building materials, and lighting. The text also includes commitments to develop the site in accordance with the submitted site plan, the open space exhibit, and architectural elevations. The proposed proposed LAR12 Limited Apartment Residential District will permit a multi-use, a multi-unit residential development containing up to 336 apartment units. While the Southeast Land Use Plan recommends low-density residential land uses at this location, the increased density at this site is supportable because of the submitted site plan, demonstrating high-quality landscaping and screening, which includes mounting and fencing, usable open space that is connected by trails to internal sidewalks and adjacent parkland, and a series of interconnected streets, sidewalks, and paths with connections to adjacent developments and parkland, all of which are consistent with the C2P2 design guidelines. Additionally, the applicant has committed to architectural elevations, which have met with approval from Planning Division staff. The applicant has also agreed to limit traffic access to Long Road with access to Bowen Road restricted to emergency vehicles only. Therefore, our City Department's recommendation is now for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments? Dan, traffic.
Traffic impact study has been approved, and all traffic issues have been resolved.
All right. And Kathy?
We have no comments at this time. We've worked pretty closely with the applicant, so we're, we are in agreement.
Very good. It's very, very obvious that you've had an input there. Okay. Jill Tangen, is there anything you want to add to the presentation by the staff?
Yes, and I don't know, is it possible, Shannon, for me to share my screen in the interest of a picture's worth a thousand words, and maybe I can go faster? Is that okay? All right.
No, I just, I gave you permission, there you go.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that. Like I said, I can do this a little bit faster, and I'm gonna skip ahead because I am well aware you have all had a long evening. This site was actually rezoned in 2017 for a PUD6 on the site. And the, this that I'm showing you on my screen right now is the proposed, this was the, this is the existing zoning, PUD6, that's on the site. While these were four-unit multifamily buildings, they are, they were always intended to be rentals. The developer at the time was very clear, these were going to be rental units. But they have a very big footprint, as you can see. And so, this was the total of the open space that was left on this project as a result of the existing zoning, which was about three acres to the site. And so, pretty limited in terms of, of open space. And as I said, the existing zoning units are multifamily, they were always intended to be rentals. The, unfortunately, the previous developer found himself in a financial situation and could not develop the site under the existing zoning and put it up for sale. And the applicant purchased this site recently. And they are rezoning the site primarily to change the product type to a multi-story, more typical apartment building. But one of the things that this clearly does to the site is allows us to condense the development internally to the site. And we are now able to preserve almost, I think it's almost 14 acres of open space. There are nice trees in this area on this land. And as Kathy mentioned, we've discussed with them donating the southern portion of this property, which backs up to the metro parks, to the City of Columbus Parks and Rec for their use. And I think that this would be a fabulous amenity to the neighborhood to give them this, this additional open space to the south. We also, as we went through this process, we met with the Greater Southeast Area Commission on three different occasions. And there were some neighbors that address, expressed some concerns. And you'll see on this site plan, this is the first site plan we started with, which actually had 384 units on it. But after meeting with the Greater Southeast Area Commission, and then we also held meetings with some of the neighbors on Bowen Road and also with the neighbor to the immediate west of the property. And so, as a result of those meetings, we came back with the site plan that's now before you this evening. We, notably, we dropped out two full buildings, so almost 50 units out of the project, so that we're down to 336. Replaced those two buildings, which were here on Bowen Road, with mounting landscaping here. And then we added fencing and some pretty significant landscaping here along the western border. And as Tim mentioned in his comments, we also reduced the Bowen Road access to emergency access only, which prompted the change, slight change in the site plan that you have before you tonight on Long Road. So, all of our traffic will, will go out Long Road. So, we feel like that we've done a pretty significant job of working with the neighbors. And I believe Tim provided you with two good neighbor agreements that we did with two of the residents on Bowen Road. And in those good neighbor agreements, they both expressed support for this project. We also worked closely with the neighbor to the west, who is also supportive of the project. And, you know, we think we've made very good changes. I know that a lot of the concerns that got raised at the Greater Southeast vote is that they were concerned about the rentals. I think it's, it's in their statement. They were concerned about trash and about crime. And, you know, we explained to them that this is going to be a owner-managed project. And obviously, it's to our advantage to make sure it stays to be a quality project. We can't afford to have a lot of trash and, and, you know, maintenance issues. Obviously, it makes it tough to keep a project like this rented, if we do. So, while we understood their, their issues, you know, it really had to do with the rental issue. And that is already existing on this site. The current zoning, as I mentioned, was for rental units as well. But I know a representative is here from the Greater Southeast, so I'm sure if he has, if you have questions, you're welcome to ask him directly. But I'll be happy to answer any questions. I'm sorry to go through a long presentation, but I wanted to give you at least a little background so you understood where we were coming from.
I appreciate the illustration, it's meaningful. Okay, let's hear from the area commission representative first.
Good evening. I'm Anthony Rice, the Chair of the Greater Southeast Area Commission. I was actually just logging in to be a spectator with, because we have two, we had two applications tonight that we had interest in. But I can try and field any questions that anybody has for myself.
Given the, given the presentation that Jill Tangleman just gave, are you satisfied that your, your concerns were dealt with properly?
I didn't have concerns, well, I had concerns with the original, the, the amount of units that were going to be there. But when they did the reduction, I personally am satisfied with the reductions. But there were a few of my fellow commissioners that were not satisfied with that. And one, one commissioner wanted, was more in support of having single-family homes on this location versus rentals because of where it's at in relation to some of the single-family lots in that area.
He understands this is already zoned for rentals, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, let's, let's see if there's any other comments from anyone else that is interested in speaking. Do you know of any, Shannon?
I didn't, I didn't have any contact news that they were gonna speak tonight, so.
Okay, I don't see anybody pushing the button, so. Does anyone in the commission have any comments or questions for Jill or for the area commission?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Jill.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Jill.
Okay.
Hi, Jill.
Hi, how are you?
I think I'm all right. I'm not sure.
It's been a long night. I know.
Do you think good neighbor agreements are enforceable contracts?
I do. I think I don't expect the City of Columbus to enforce them. I think they are outside of the, you know, the, the zoning enforcement, but they are enforceable contracts between two private parties. And especially in this case, sometimes I've seen some good neighbor agreements that are a little questionable because there's no consideration, in my opinion. But in this particular case, there are, you know, we've asked for their support, but we have also agreed to do some specific things for them, like test their wells to make sure that there's no damage during construction. So, I do think in this case, there's a quid pro quo that makes it a binding contract.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Okay, we do need to include the revised text dated three nine twenty twenty-one and the good neighbor agreements dated February twenty-three, two thousand twenty-one. Need a motion.
There's also, there's also an updated site plan and open space exhibit.
Okay.
All of that.
That's all part of the supplemental package?
Yes, and it's all dated March ninth.
March ninth. Okay. Motion to include this information in the application, please. Okay. Marty, motion second?
Second.
Okay, okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, please, let's go roll.
Amanda Golden.
Yes.
Sean Ingriffen.
Yes.
Kayon Luque.
Yes.
Marty Anderson.
Yes.
Chair Fitzpatrick.
Yes, you are approved, and the agenda is complete.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night. Shannon, can you go down the list just as far as split votes? Like, split vote on one? And on three?
I've got it here, John. One, three, five? Five? And that's it? One, three, and five?
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, do you need a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I'd like, perhaps Amanda would like to give a motion to adjourn the meeting so she can put her young one to bed.
Sleep right now, but yes, I want a motion to adjourn the meeting.
She's already abstained. Okay. I'll second that one myself. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.
Good night.
Night, everybody.
Good night.